Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our last session of interviews with candidates for the position of Director of Schools for Fentress County. Today, we welcome Mr. Jason Tompkins, and I'll go over the following schedule of interviews today. At 1:00 PM, it'll be the Principals and Central Staff. At 2:00 PM, Community Leaders. At 3:15 faculty and staff. And then, from 4:30 to 6:00, it'll be dinner with Mr. Tompkins if anybody wants to meet and greet him out in the lunch area adjacent to the main room here. And at 6:00 PM, it'll be interviews by the Board of Education, and this should be concluded by 7:45 PM. It normally don't take that long. Now, the rules are the same for the other two candidates that we've interviewed. The candidate will be given 10 minutes for an introduction of themselves, followed by 50 minutes of questions and answers from the participants at the 1:00 PM session. What we'll do is like we did before, we'll start at the left side of the podium, and we'll go around, and once you ask your questions, then we'll have a moment for follow-up questions from anybody that may have them. So by saying that, I'd like to welcome Mr. Jason Tompkins, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good afternoon. So, I think I'll give the short version to this group. I believe you all know me, or at least have met with me a time or two. So, my name is Jason Tompkins. I'm the current Principal of Alvin-Cyork Institute. I'm a widower of Brandy Tompkins, who is a Fentress County educator and a Faith Christian Academy educator. I'm a proud daddy of Ashley and Seth, who attend Alvin-Cyork Institute. I'm a proud Fentress Countyan, and I'm a strong believer in the Christian faith. I guess you could say, career-wise, I've always been in education. I started out working for farmers, mowing yards in Harmouth Way. I worked right into RCs, and I went to Save-A-Lot. I went to Rowan State. I worked five days a week for Save-A-Lot, went to school for two days. I did that for five years. Well, four and a half years. I graduated Tennessee Tech in the fall of 98. I just got a phone call. How do I turn that off? Sorry about that. In the fall of 98, I graduated tech with a bachelor's degree in secondary education English. I started with Fentress County School System as a substitute. Ms. Tanya called me every morning somewhere around 5:30, 6 o'clock. I subbed in all the county schools, mostly at Clark Range, because I was in the high school arena myself. I stayed with them. I taught summer school that summer. And then, in the fall of 99, I became an English teacher at York Institute. I did that for eight years. I became a substitute bus driver, pep club sponsor, English 9, English 10 educator. And I got married, had two children. I got my master's degree, my educational specialist degree. Drove for pep club, soccer, softball, football, baseball, basketball, and for the county. And I did that up until Mr. Brandon put me in as the Dean of Students eight years later. That was interesting. When I went into being Dean of Students, we had smartphones came out. And so, man, I was fighting the war at that moment. We had five or 600 students with smartphones in their pockets, and we were telling them they couldn't use them. And so, I learned a lot. And the conflicts that I had to ride up through on that, it was an experience. And then, just discipline in itself, because I was the head disciplinarian. And then, I continued to drive the bus. I continued to be several different things, but I worked with scheduling, I worked with students, I worked with the community. I did all the school safety. I did all the ballgames. And I kept that going for the next eight years. And then, about six and a half years ago, I became Principal and Federal Programs Director for York Institute, instructional leader. And I've done that for six and a half years. And so, accomplishments. I've survived. I've learned a lot. I've done pretty well building relationships. I've done a tremendous amount of growth in learning what quality education means. And I have evolved, you might say. The importance of education is all about the student. It's really not about me. It's really not about teachers, except if you don't really support your teachers and put them up to the front, you will not have a quality education for your students. And so, that's where I have really put my last five years in. Federal programs grew me in understanding all of my different groups, my ELs, my homeless, my minorities, my special ed, building a budget. I didn't know much about running a budget until I became Federal Programs Director. And then, at times, I also was still disciplinarian, and I still attend the ballgames, and I still drive a bus, up until I have not driven a bus this semester. And honestly, I've just not had time. I am a single parent, and I'm able to see things a little differently than I've ever saw them before. But all of our parents and all of our community is absolutely dependent on us to do our best to educate their children. That's what you've got to remember. So, that's the short version. Are we ready?
Hello, Mr. Tompkins. Golly Young, Principal at York Elementary. And we all know how important quality teachers are for our students. We have lost several teachers in the past little bit due to insurance and pay. So, retention of our quality teachers is crucial, and I was just wondering your thoughts on that and how you would plan to help retain teachers.
I don't want to huff like that. If I huff again, somebody'll kick me. It's just maybe nervousness. Here's the deal. We need our teachers back. We've got great teachers that's left our county, and it may be because they've not been valued, it may be because they wanted higher pay, it may be for all kinds of reasons. The thing is, we can't look back, we've got to look forward. And truthfully, at York, I've done pretty good about keeping our teachers. Now, part of that is, we pay a little more, and our benefits are a little better just because we're a state school. But I would be remiss, I would be absolutely wrong if I did not say that teacher salaries does not need to increase in Fentress County. And I don't know what the proper way to bring that out, but I do know that you should be able to look at an average of like schools, like systems in the upper Cumberland, see what they're getting, and see if we can't move in that direction. Another thing, though, is you have to be valued. You know, they say, and I haven't read it, but I've heard this several times, that salary is not the reason a teacher leaves a district. But you know it has to be part of it. And so, salary's one thing, but I think if you're valued as an employee, that it would make it a lot harder for you to leave. And truthfully, I'd like to get some of those back. Oh, and just one thing, I've heard you're doing great at York Elementary.
Hello, Mr. Tompkins. Ashley Bilbury, Vice Principal at York Elementary. We know that the education system has lots of challenges every day. What do you believe is the greatest challenge facing Fentress County schools at this time, and how would you plan to address that challenge?
So, I've thought about that a lot. I've actually scripted a lot of my answers, and I'm trying not to, trying not just to read them off to you. I think we need a culture of cheering for each other. And I know that sounds a little bit maybe small in the educational world, but I kind of bring it back to my pep rallies. When we have pep rallies, I don't let our kids boo each other. I say, "We cheer for each other. We support one another." When we put goals out there, it's a county goal, and we need to be cheering our schools on to meet their own goals. And you can't compare one school to another school, but what you do is you focus on what kids are learning. And if you've got a group that needs to hit 23% in the LA, and another group that needs to hit 31% in the LA, everybody pulls to the same boat. We all just get in and row. And I think that, honestly, would put us on a whole different level. But we've got to dig into what is important to the kids, and that's their education. And then, go from there. But cheer for each other.
William Bilbury, Vice Principal, Pine Haven Elementary. Talking about expectations, what do you think, what would you set as expectations for Principals and Assistant Principals?
Can you push into me a little more on that? What do you mean?
What would be your vision for us as building-level administrators?
Okay, so I've learned a lot about being a principal. A principal is your educational leader in your school. That's the person that you've got to look to. They're the ones that's driving what's taking place. You're the ones that's saying, "Hey, this is going well, this isn't going so well." And then, you've got to be the one that says, "Here's how we fix that." So, I would personally like to see a pretty strong principal collaboration, you might say. At York, I use an agenda sheet for leadership, and I pull all of the, and it's just not me, it's Mr. Bush and myself. But every week, we meet, we have an agenda, you put what you need on that agenda, and that's what we discuss. We don't go, we don't chase rabbit trails all over the place, but we keep things rolling at a pretty quick basis. And we know what concerns are coming, we know what you're needing help with, and then we go out from there. So, for me, it would be supportive of your principals. I have also learned, and this is important, there's always issues. I mean, you've got to filter them. You've got them coming most of the time from different sides. You've got parents, you've got community, you've got teachers, and you've got to be willing to listen. But something that I've had modeled before me, and I really like it, if you've got somebody with an issue that comes to me as the director, of course, I'm not saying I'm going to be the director, I'm just saying if I was the director, my first question would be, "What's the principal say?" And if they don't know, I say, "You need to go ask them. Do you want me to go with you?" But we're going to find out what they've got to say first.
Thank you.
Ernest Campbell, Principal at Aller. Mr. Tompkins, we know that in educating our children, that family involvement is very, very important. What plan do you have to engage family and community into our school system?
Ernest, you know the answer to that question just as well as I do. You've got to be available. You've got to take your opportunities when you can, just like all of you do inside of your school systems. If you're not visible, and if you're not accessible, and if you're not willing to listen, you're not going to have very good community involvement. Now, the answers that you'll see from the team evaluation rubric for administrators will be, you pull in stakeholder interest through surveys, through Facebook posts, through your website, through, you know, the gommit of things that you can be able to run things through. But the number-one thing that you've got to do to be community-involved is you've got to be in your community, and you've got to be willing to listen to your community. And you can't be personal, when I say "personal," you can't take it personally if they have something that you don't agree with, because that might be the very key that you were looking for. And so, that's the deal. And your principals have got to be the same way, and your vice principals. You've got to be accessible to your people.
Thank you.
Mr. Tompkins, Tammy Norman, Assistant Principal at Aller. This question's a little lengthy, but I'll try to break it down. Right now, we have a basic instructional framework for the county, okay? But every school in this county has a different dynamic of student, I'm sure you're aware of. What are your thoughts about having a basic framework for the county academically, but each school being able to differentiate to meet the needs of their specific students? Thank you.
That's a good question. Okay, so, the key is quality instruction. And for the last couple of years, last year and a half, I've worked with Dr. Worthington, a Cognia consultant, and it's amazing what he's taught me. But a quality instruction comes from a quality set of standards that you want done. Now, for us, what I've implemented at York is standards-based learning through quality targets, student-friendly targets, quality assessments, and quality strategies. And you put all three of those together, and you do it every day, it's amazing what can be accomplished. As far as what you're saying, as far as differentiating between the schools, well, that's what we ask our teachers to do. You have to. You have to take the strengths and weaknesses of what you're going. I think it goes back to mostly, though, in remediation and enrichment, and I know the county does a good job on that, but it's having a little bit of levity in what you're doing. Pacing guides are important, though. And I've kind of switched right into that, but without pacing guides, a student, you've got to be what's fair. And so, a student that transfers from York and goes to Pine Haven ought to be able to have pretty close to the same standard of what they've already been taught and what they're supposed to learn in the next year, or wherever it is that they are. And then, as far as like classes, a fifth grade ought to be doing pretty close to what fifth grade's doing all over the county. Now, inside of that is some levity. We've stuck with textbooks, with fidelity. I've learned how to do the IPG quite well. But at that very rate, you have to allow teachers some supplemental ability to do and push in, where they know they've got to push in. And so, we at York, we've got PLCs, we've got pacing guides, but we don't keep them on every day together. We keep them pretty close, in two or three days or a week. Now, our CFAs, we try to get those pretty close, just so that we have data coming in at the same time. But overall, I think every school knows what their weaknesses are and their strengths are, and I think they know the weaknesses and strengths of their teachers. But I think it goes back to what's quality. Did I answer that question? Who's next?
Sherri York, Principal at Pine Haven. You've kind of touched on this just a little bit in another answer, but being an administrator and your principal, tell us a little bit about what type of support would you give the building-level administrators when you have an upset parent on a decision we've made?
I've cut my teeth on that one. Conflict is never easy. The key to conflict, and I didn't do this great to start with, I think maybe I wanted to win. Now, conflict's not about winning, it's more about what's setting forth and doing what you're supposed to do. And then, being as kind as you can while you're doing it. The key for a principal, though, is to know that your director is going to support you. Now, if you just do something absolutely wrong, you've just got to be transparent about it. And principals have got to be willing to know that, you know, sometimes I didn't necessarily handle it right. But my answer is that, is what I just said. What did the principal say? How did they handle it? Lots of times, they'll say, "Ah, well, I've not talked to them." That's not going to work. We've got to figure out what that principal said. And then, for me, I would never cut down a principal in front of anybody. I mean, that would be, well, that's murder. You can't do that to your principals. You've got to call them, and you've got to say, "Hey, tell me what's going on in this situation." And a parent doesn't have to have an answer right now. They might want an answer right now, and oftentimes, they do. But the thing is, you've got to make good decisions, and you won't make a good decision until you talk to that principal first. How's that?
Kristy Walker, Principal at South Fentress. My question is, your career has been in a high school setting. How do you plan to become familiar with all the dynamics of an elementary school setting, or different elementary schools?
What a great question. Okay, so I have thought about that some. I still take it back to what is a quality, what is a quality classroom look like, or what does a quality classroom look like? And it's targeted instruction based on standards, and it's engagement with students, it's not that stand and deliver that a lot of us went through as students ourselves. But in my situation, being a high school-oriented person, I would absolutely have to rely on you to let me learn what it looks like in elementary schools. And I have also found out, in the last year and a half, how good it is to go into your classrooms, and I call them like a three-minute pop, but it's amazing what you can figure out in three minutes in a classroom. You can see what a teacher's doing, you can see what students are doing, you can see what an environment looks like, and you can see what the management style is. And you do that over, you do that one time a month, you can hit 40 classrooms in a couple hours. And over time, you've got a pretty good indicator of what it looks like. And you also can tell who's your, who's quality, or when I say "who's quality," who's doing a quality job and who's struggling. And that is something that I think I've got an answer for.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tompkins.
Hey, Ms. Tina.
Tina Smith, Language Arts RTI Coordinator. How will you communicate expectations to school faculty and staff and give them a voice?
Okay, so, I was talking to somebody over here a while ago about the agenda I do once a week. And what we did was, we went through our entire school, and we pulled somebody from every hallway. And of course, I used my leaders, my Assistant Principal, my RTI coach, my ELA coach, my math coach, and then STEM and federal programs, but then, we went and got somebody out of every hallway. And we put them in on the action team. And so, every person in school has access to someone in their hallway that they can talk to. And then, we bring stuff out, we're just transparent. We take notes, everything we discuss, we put back out in notes, and then, every teacher's got somebody that they can connect to, that can bring that into that action team and bring it up when they want to, or if they want to, and it will be discussed, and an answer will be given. The big thing, though, is the why. You know, when you make a decision, if you don't understand the why, then you're left to fill it in yourself. And so, by having it open and transparent and pushing it right back into your, in our case, it would be in our buildings, into our schools, you can answer it, and it takes away the guesswork, it takes away the what-ifs. But it's, here's why we made the decision, here's how the decision was made, here's what is successful about the succession, or what we want to be successful with this decision, and then, we push it out. So, it's a two-way street.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Tompkins.
Hey, Ms. Tina.
Gina Butler, Elementary Curriculum Supervisor. How will you evaluate the programs and practices that are currently in place to determine their effectiveness and their status moving forward?
Okay, so, that's a great question. And probably 10 years ago, I would've said, "Well, you know, I'd have looked to see how it felt." And feelings are just something that can come and go. You've got to find a way to determine through data what the truth is. If it's an effective program, there is some data somehow that will prove that. And if it's not being effective, there's some data somehow that shows that it's not. And I don't know in every situation how you create data, but you can find a way. But it's not, it can't be just based on feelings. There has to be some substance behind what you're looking at and how you're looking at it. But I think often, we don't know what success looks like before we start something. And so, in the planning phase, you've got to, what is successful about what we're doing? You know, is it something that we're doing for tradition's sake? Because we've done a lot of things. I've done a lot of things for tradition's sake. It's just the way we've always done it. I'll give a quick one on that one. We were talking about buying chairs for graduation, because, you know, you always use cafeteria chairs, and you do these chairs, and you're moving these and back and forth, and my new director, he said, "What's the deal with buying chairs?" And I said, "Well, you've got to have chairs for graduation." And he said, "Well, you can rent chairs." And I know that sounds so silly, but I thought, "You're right. You can rent chairs." The thing is, you've got to look at something and decide, is that the best way, or is it just the way that we've always done it? And what is most appropriate? And what does success look like? And then, find your data.
Thank you.
And you can rent chairs.
Sorry, I always have trouble with the microphone. Sandy Canaster.
Hey, Ms. Sandy.
Pre-K Special Ed Supervisor. My question to you, Mr. Tompkins, is just tell me a little bit about your leadership style. Describe who you are and how you lead. And in that, what is your communication style?
I've written that down. I want to make sure I get it correct, but I want to go off the cuff. So, my leadership style has evolved, just like I said in some of the things that I've learned through discipline, through parent contact, through community relationships. Used to, I was a grunt through. I'd just work my tail off, and I still work pretty hard. But now, I'm much more acceptable to being a learner. I don't know all the right answers. I never have. But when I know things are working correctly, I better support it. So, at my school, I think you would find that I have become a decent leader because I've built strong relationships with my faculty. And I listen to them, and I'm accessible to them, and I try not to take things personable, that's the wrong word again, personally, when they disagree with me. And becoming solution-driven, instead of becoming a fault-finder, which I think we can often do, you know, where's the problem? Who's the problem? What's the problem? Well, sometimes, it's better just forget the problem, or forget how it might've got there, and start looking forward. How do we solve it? What can I do? What can you do? What can someone else do? Who do we know that's able to do that well? What are they doing? Can we make that work for us? Another thing, I think, as far as leadership style, is I really believe I am a continuous learner. You know, as a teacher, I came out basically doing what I had been taught. I was a stand guy. And before I got out of the classroom, I was much more about student engagement and pushing into the kids, and allowing them, and through your questioning, and them thinking, and then modeling, became so much more important to me. So, I learned through that. As Dean of Students, oh, I was just, I don't know, I think maybe winning was my first, you know, I just, I've got to do everything right. Everybody's, you know, holding the ground. But I learned that it was through relationships with students that you were able to maintain a lot better discipline. And, you know, a knucklehead's a knucklehead, but you can still love them. And so, focusing on the issue, not on the person, I think maybe that's been one of my strongest ways of becoming a successful leader. You know, you're dependent on your people. You've got to take care of them. And so, being able to relate that back and forth, and making the problems at hand, or whatever it is, might be a success. It's about what your students are doing and how do we get there? So, I will probably answer that differently farther on down the line, but y'all know me a little differently than what I'll be doing later on. But as far as a leader, I try to lead by example. I hold myself accountable more than I do anyone else. I try to live righteously. I'm not perfect by any means, but I do try to do that. I try to be kind when I can. And truthfully, if it's a line I've got to hold, I'll just tell you. It's not going to work, this is the line, and this is where we've got to meet it. And I think that's just being open and transparent. So, that's probably a good strength of mine, too. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tompkins, I do know that you've got quite a bit of experience with discipline, so just wanting your overall thoughts on using corporal punishment, and if you have alternative consequences if you don't agree with that.
Oh, I don't know. I've probably paddled 100, maybe more. 15 years ago, paddling was, you know, one of the things that we've just done the most. I still find it to be very successful. However, I've not paddled anyone in two years. I always had a set standard of how I paddled. I had the same little speech that I gave, always had my person in my room, maybe, you know, if it was sometimes a secretary, but generally a fellow administrator or a teacher or someone. And I'm sure there's a lot out there on Facebook that I've probably paddled, and you might be smiling right now. I think paddling is effective occasionally. I don't think it needs to be overused or overabused. And honestly, I don't think I ever had a child to take a paddling. They had to choose it. And so, that was my way. I'd say, "You can have two licks, you can have a day of ISS, you can have an hour of after-school detention, might be five days of lunch detention." I'd give them options. And so, for me, discipline's about options, but it's not really about the discipline, it's about the corrective behavior that you get from it. And you know, if you've got a... And you know, if, if you've got a, two kids having a water fight and destroying, you know, destroying something and you need to come in, you say, "Hey, Johnny, you can't do that. I'm gonna give you two licks, or I'm gonna give you a day of ISS, or I'm gonna give you an after-school detention." But the big deal is you've gotta change the way you're doing things. You can't keep doing this. And, uh, call the parent. Lots of times parents will say, "Can you just give them a paddling?" Absolutely. But, uh, that's my feelings. I, I think use as many options as you can, but the big deal is correct the behavior.
Mr. Tompkins, you spoke a little bit earlier about teacher pay scale. This question kinda goes along with that. Um, a few examples are our Bus Duty Coordinator currently makes more than, um, assistant principals. We also have teachers assistants and just employees within our system, um, who are able to get a higher paying job elsewhere. Um, so what would you, what would be your plan or consideration for looking at the pay scale overall?
Okay, that's a budget question. But it's also something that I feel strongly about. As I've already said, uh, our teachers deserve a professional salary, just like the other teachers in upper Cumberland. And a, a principal, an assistant principal, or instructional leaders of your school, they have a lot on their plate. And they ought to be, they ought to be, uh, paid for that. As far as me, I think right now I'm correct. Principals are 11 months, is that right? I would like to see that 12 months. I think a principal should be the highest paid salary in the, in the building. That's my opinion. Uh, but this all comes back to budget. And so I'm not extremely well-versed in the Fenchurch County School budget. I've looked at it, looks like about 12 million goes out into, uh, teachers, I mean, salaries in general. And so you're gonna have to be intentional about how that gets done. And I think, uh, budget questions will come later on tonight. But I do like what the county's doing with the bonuses for, uh, non-teacher salaries. However, from what I've dug into, I think it needs to be increased. And the reason being is those, those aides and those substitutes, I've been a substitute. Hey, you're putting that substitute in front of those classes and you're saying you're in the substitute of a quality teacher. And so you've got to expect them to, to do what you're asking them to do. And in order to do that, you're gonna have to pay them. So it may not be through salary increase. It might be through the bonus increase. And I think that together, we could figure out a way to make that happen intentionally and figuring out a pay scale that would work, that our board would agree on. Because you know, they're the ones that's gonna have to decide, is that, is that good or is that bad? And so we just have to do our plan and come up with it and set some, uh, options. And I think that's a key, is creating some options. But, um, if you value somebody, you'll pay them.
Um, my question kinda has two parts here. Let's say you, you were, uh, put in as the next Director of Schools here. What are your plans to move Fenchurch County, uh, schools in a more positive direction?
That's a good question.
In other words, take them from where they're at.
I've jotted some notes down. Here's what I wrote. Success breeds success and positivity breeds positivity. Uh, being solution-driven and not fault-finding is vital. And I've learned to do that. I'm not perfect at it, but it's absolutely the best way to go with things. Uh, you have to treat people with the golden rule. There's no other way. You can't put people down and expect them to be happy about it. Uh, you can be selective in how you, uh, you bring out issues. I have found just being direct, open, honest and direct is the best policy. But you have to value people and you have to give them a voice. There's no other way. Because if you don't give them a voice, they're still gonna have a voice. And it may not be to you. So if you're giving people those voices, and go back to what I said, when you allow access into the administration, and administration into your faculty and staff, and you allow them a voice, then they're able to be heard. And if you're working all the time and you're doing a good job and you're working and nobody's ever paying attention or noticing, uh, you get despondent. And so you gotta have to be, you have to be intentional seeing what's working well. And you have to be intentional saying, "Good job." And then if they're not doing a good job in something, don't make it personal. Just say, "Hey, here's something that you can change." And have an answer for why they can change it. But that's, overall, and then going back to cheering, man, we have to cheer for each other. There's no other reason not, I mean, our community needs us cheering for each other. Our students need us to model cheering for each other. I'm, I'm big on it.
I got one more part to, Mr. Campbell here. Been a lot of discussion about PD. So currently we do PD before the school year starts and throughout the year. Uh, but it's always raised a question whenever, um, teachers are pulled out of the classroom, subs are either put in or we don't have them, because we have sub shortage. What's your thoughts on, how, how would you handle that? Um, ha- taking a day off, um, sending the kids home, teachers stay, doing most of it in the summer? What, just what's your thoughts on implementing PD and carrying it?
Okay, so I love PD, but I don't love it unless it's targeted and, and has a good, strong point to it. PD has grown me and I have seen the benefits of it. Here's my take on it. I think our teachers, and I, when I say our teachers, that's the county teachers and York Institute teachers, I think we learn best from each other. I'm a train-the-trainer kinda guy. I've seen the value of it. Bring our top guy, our top lady that's doing something well. Ask them what they need, how they need to be supported, and let them turn around and teach our people. But sometimes you don't know the answers. That's just like with targeted instruction. I didn't know the answers on that. But, uh, Dr. Worthing came in, he gave me a lot of training myself. Uh, then he would sometimes use, and then we use planning periods a lot. But, uh, we would go through with planning periods and maybe he would do the first session and the second session, and I'd do the third, fourth and fifth. But when you, when you have someone you already trust, and you know they're doing something well, and they've got something to be able to share with you, then PD becomes beneficial. And you say, and you'll take something back with that. As far as taking teachers out of the classrooms for PD, I'd rather not do that unless it's just an absolute, because that teacher needs to be in front of those kids. That's, that's the key. I mean, that's the reason we pay the teachers, is for their strength in education, educating our students. So I would rather not sacrifice the learning time for PD. Uh, I do know that, and I've not done very well at this, it's something that we've discussed and I've realized the benefit of it. You know, um, uh, you can, you can ask for, I'm pretty sure I'm correcting this, a couple of your snow days to be considered as PD days throughout the year. And I think that it's wise throughout the year to have some PD. And to have a, a refresher and have, uh, a chance to, to get together with your teachers and say, "Hey, you know, here's something we can all focus on for the rest of the semester. Here's something that we're not doing too well on, here's how we can make this better." Uh, I think ongoing professional development is just the same things we're asking students to do. We're wanting them to learn continuously and I think we gotta be willing to do the same.
Jason, I'm sure that in your present job description, you've had several success stories. Would you, uh, share with us just one of the success stories you've had?
Let's see. You know, I always wanna talk about Dragon's Renaissance, but that's, that's been a while. That's been fully implemented and it's a, it's an absolute culture in our school. Uh, and I stole that from, believe it or not, Mr. Bush, who's now the current Director of York Institute. Uh, we went to his school 15 years ago. I'd heard about it. I said, "Man, I gotta see what, what's going on." We went down, we saw him, we saw what he's doing in the school, we brought back, put that back into York. And it's, I don't think you could run it out of our school. You know, and it's just a reward system for good grades and good attendance. And so, and kids are constantly trying to make sure that they stay or get into Dragon's Renaissance. So that's one. But I guess right now, my, my proudest moment is STEM education at York. We're going to be, we're on track and pretty, pretty sure that we'll be the 19th school in the state of Tennessee to be STEM Cognia accredited. That's a big deal. And it doesn't happen overnight. We've been working on this, we spent all last semester just planning. And so, uh, this year we implemented it at the ninth grade level in our ELA, math, computer apps and science classes. We've also got a plan to make it happen in the ninth and 10th grade next year, a ninth, 10th and 11th grade the near, year after that. But at the same time, we've included the educate, the, uh, engineering design process in 10th, 11th and 12th grade, so that they're part of this STEM initiative. And it's not just an initiative, it's a culture change. And so, uh, and I, just to give a shout out to Sherry, back when we were planning this last year, I went and I talked to some of the educators and I said, "What do you think about STEM education?" And I still had it in my mind as a STEM teacher and a STEM program. That's not what STEM's all about. It's embedding it in across your curriculum. But, uh, Sherry said, "STEM's what we should've been done, doing 20 years ago. It is the way to think. It is the way to move forward." And buddy, I agree with her. And I've quoted her many times in front of a lot of people. But for me right now, man, that's a success. It's not happened, but I'll bet you in May, you'll hear that we're a Cognia accredited STEM school. Thank you.
I have a question about your administrators and your teachers. How do you feel about moving people around from school to school? Traditionally here in this county, you know, once you get at a school, that's where you stay, what are your thoughts on moving people around?
Okay, so something that I would like to see different, I, okay, I shouldn't say different, I don't know all the ins and outs of the county system. But I believe principals should be in charge of hiring their people. And I think that makes that principal responsible for who they hire. And they're gonna wanna grow that person. And that gives value to the person that gets hired, that gives value to that principal to put into that person, because that's the person they're gonna be working for. So that's not really answering your question, but I'm just getting that out there. The other side is just be open, let people, let people apply. I have interviewed many, many people over the last 15 years. And I have learned every time I interview, when I go into something, I'll think, you know, this, this will be a, you know, you'll kinda have, you have four people, you'll think, I, you know, I can see where this one individual might be the, the strength. But then you get into the interview process and you either pick up something that you didn't know, or you'll realize something about someone you had no idea about. And, and it's through that process that you figure out what you need, what's gonna fit the best for that situation. And so I feel like, like at the district level for sure, you need to open positions up. You know, I don't know a position that's gonna open. Uh, but let's, let's say it's Miss Gina's position. Let's say you retire five years from now. I would open it up and say, "Who wants to apply for that position?" We'd go from there. Now, inside of the school, inside of Pine Haven, I would want Sherry to tell me who she wants to be in a position. She's the principal. And, you know, flesh that out. Ask her why, get the recommendation, but I would, I would rely on my principals.
Talk to us just a little bit about zoning. What's your thoughts on zoning? You know, I know that there's been some thoughts in the community, we're kind of a zo- a soft zoning, but we don't really zone. So tell us what your thoughts are on zoning.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and say it. I'm, I'm not for zoning. And here's why. Uh, I'm a, I'm a single parent. And I, I don't wanna be a single parent. And there's a lot of us out here in the community that don't wanna be single parents. But we are. And we might work in Crossville. And so if I work in Crossville, uh, I can wait longer to drop my child off at South Fenchurch Elementary and drive to Crossville, work and come back through and I'll have the quickest chance of picking my child up at South Fenchurch Elementary. And so I think zoning takes away from what's best for a child and kinda tries to spread out proper amounts in your school. But, uh, we're a, we're a all-over-the-place kinda community. You know, we lived in Armuthwaite, but Brandy worked at York Elementary. And you know, if, if we would've zoned, we would've went to Allard. But we'd've probably got a, a, a break because she was a teacher at York Elementary, but if she deserves a break, wouldn't everybody deserve a break? And so when you get into, to zoning, I don't know that it's fair. And if there's a loophole on zoning, you're just cutting yourself, there's not, there's no fairness there. And so I think what the key is, is making all of our schools viable and excellent places for any student to go to. But that's my answer on zoning, I'm not for it.
Mr. Tompkins, you know the pandemic has created a learning loss problem across the state. And as a district, we try to address it. And the state has also put in some mandates and some, uh, incentives to try to help with the learning loss. Two of those being summer school, which is mandated, and the tutoring program, which is kinda voluntary, but, uh, expected at the state level. So what would be your vision for summer school and the tutoring program?
Okay, so I've run a summer school. And what we do is we run credit recovery at high school and I've done it for years. Even when I was in Dean of Students, I was kinda over the, the summer credit recovery. I'll tell you what we're doing at York. And I think it's gonna be successful, if we can ever get our SRR money released. Uh, we're gonna pay our teachers extremely well for an hour up to three hours a week for after-school tutoring. We're gonna start a Saturday school. And of course, we'll have credit recovery in the summer. And all three of those are, are good, all three of them are needed. I think if you're going to, what, 20% of the SRR funds, SRR III has got to be spent on learning loss. And so if you're really going to make it worthwhile, pay somebody to do it and pay them well and have some expectations. One of the things though, before that teacher at, at our school is going to be able to get that money is they've gotta have a student in front of them. They can't just stay after, you know, three hours a week and get the salary. There has to be a student that's tied to it. Uh, the key is finding out what students need to know, what remediation are they needing? And I think that goes back to your education. Targeted education that has, uh, strong quality assessments that says, "Hey, this, this, you know, this child needs a, this child needs remediation, they're, you know, they're, they're missing this standard." And so it needs to be on time. You know, and I, and we've all said it at my school often, you go all year and then the kid fails, then in three weeks, we're trying to make up that credit. But the, it's much more effective if you can do it on time. You know, you pull that child as they're, as they're getting behind and not wait till the end, just try to do the catch-up. And so I guess maybe that's my answer. I don't really know. I tell you what I do know. I know that the ladies and gentlemen sitting in this room have got some pretty good ideas about it. And if we put that on an agenda, I guarantee you, we could flesh something out pretty quick.
Thank you.
My last question kinda thieves a little bit off of what Gina's just said with your answer with that. But the students that I'm primarily responsible for are called special, kids with special populations, which means a various and a sundress, different things. How do those students fit into your goals for your overall picture?
Just like all the students. Uh, you know, and the, the textbook answer is all students are special. You know, every student's got their own need. Uh, special ed, obviously they have IPs, you meet those IPs, but you have to teach your special ed students with everything you've got too. It's amazing what you can do with a child when you put into them. And so for me personally, I love my special ed students, but a lot of times, we don't even know which ones they are. You know, we put them in our classrooms, we are full inclusion in our school. Uh, and even your, at your very basic, even your CDCs, we have those in the, in, in classrooms every day. And they're learning, uh, you know, we've had students and we've had your students, you know, they come from you, they come to us, because our students are our students. And, uh, you put them in the least restrictive environment as you possibly And, uh, you put them in the least restrictive environment as you possibly can. And you put into them and you put quality people around them. Because they deserve that. But, uh, special pops are, are super important and they're part of your accountability. So, you know, just as, as far as the district level, you better be taking care of them. But, uh, yeah, I, I love my special ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Uh, that concludes our one to two o'clock session. We'll be back at 2:00 PM, uh, for community leaders. Thank you very much. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen, to our two o'clock session this afternoon. It's with our community leaders. We'll use the same guidelines as we did for the last two candidates. Today we'll be interviewing Mr. Jason Tompkins. And we'll give Mr. Tompkins about 10 minutes to tell us a little bit about himself. Then we'll start off with the left side of the podium and we'll go around, around the podium. And then we'll go back for a second round of questions. And we'll send out, welcome, Mr. Tompkins, and we'll turn it over to you for an introduction.
I'll try that again. Good afternoon. Thank you all for coming. Uh, my name is Jason Tompkins. I am native of Finters County. I'm Larry Wanda Tompkins's son. My wife was Brandy Tompkins. Uh, she was an educator for Finters County School Systems and Faith Christian Academy. I'm a proud daddy of Ashlyn and Seth who attend York. I'm pretty proud to be from Finters County. And I, I don't remember exactly how I said it the last time. I'm a, I'm a strong believer in the Christian faith. And I say that because that's my internal compass. I'm not a perfect man by any means, but I do absolutely believe in that, in the tenets of that. So, um, since I think all of you know you, know me, I'm going to, uh, I'll give you the shorter version of who I am. I, uh, I was born in Armuthwaite and that's where I started out my life, of course. And I worked for farmers and mow yards. And then when I was 16, I got a job at RC's. And then I went to Save-A-Lot and I went to graduate high school in 94. I, uh, went to Rome State for two years. And it's just a proud moment, but for, for two years, I went to college two days a week and I worked five days a week. I did that every day for, for two complete years. I, I think I had two or three days off during that time period. That was a Christmas and a Thanksgiving. After that, I went to Tennessee Tech, graduated in the December of 1998 with a secondary education degree in English. I started out as history, but I switched over to English my, my second year. I realized I had a penchant for, uh, understanding and relating ELA. And I don't know that I would have ever thought about that in high school, but it served me well. So then I became a teacher at York Institute. Well, let me back up. Before I did that, I, I graduated in December and I became a substitute for Finters County School System. And I subbed the entire spring semester, pretty much every day, all the, all the community schools. I spent most of my time at Clark Ranch High School because of my degree. And, um, then that summer, I taught summer school for Finters County. And then in the fall of 99, I became an English teacher at York. I taught English nine, English 10, a few world geographies and a reading class one time. And, um, became a, a school bus driver, pep club coach. And so I attended all the way, all, every single football and basketball game, drove the bus, ran the pep club. And then, uh, when I wasn't doing that, I was running the school bus for soccer and track and softball and baseball. And I did that for eight years while I continued with my education. I got my master's degree and my ADS and got married and had two children. And, uh, I did that for eight years. And then Mr. Brandon at York put me in as the dean of students. And so I, I did that for another eight years as dean of students. At the time, it was a little heavier than what you might say an assistant principal was. I had more duties. Uh, I was more of a, a student principal. I handled all the discipline. When I say all, all major discipline issues came through my office. And, um, I told a funny story on the last one. We had, uh, when I became dean of students is when smartphones came out. And so, you know, that, none of us were even aware of what all we were dealing with. But I had four or 500 teenagers with a, with a phone in their pocket and we were telling them not to use them. And all the, the issues that arose from that, the conflicts and the, and the passion that, that arose out of those years, you know, I, I, I just, I literally cut my teeth on, on dealing with issues and, uh, all the issues that arose from that. But I tell you what it taught me. Over time, I didn't learn it perfectly the first year for sure. Over time, I learned how to deal with conflict, but I mostly learned how to deal with people. And, and you, you have to allow people to voice what their concern is. You have to listen and you have to be intentional in listening. It's not about winning. It's about holding what you're supposed to hold, which with us, you know, whatever the policy was and it changed over time, but whatever that policy was, that's what I had to hold to. But it was being able to do it in a manner that, uh, that was understandable, that, you know, you could get through, that you could be acceptable with. But, uh, do what was right, do what you had to do. So for eight years I did that job. And then about six and a half years ago, I became principal and federal programs director at York Institute. And, uh, and I really grew then because I became the instructional leader of the school. And I knew what it felt like, but I didn't necessarily know what it looked like to have a quality educational, uh, system. And, and we had it. We had great educators in my school, but I'm talking about from my perspective. And so just to be honest, through professional learning and, and being a continual learner myself, I've, I've got some pretty good grasp on what it looks like to be, uh, have a quality education in your system. And I've learned to do some strategic planning. When I say that, for instance, with my, uh, with my school right now, we have set out a, a three-year strategic plan to become a, a STEM accredited high school. We'll be the 19th one in the state of Tennessee. And that doesn't happen overnight. You have to, you have to really back up, you have to sit through, you have to do your planning first. And then as you plan, you've got to develop. And as you develop, you've got to make sure that you're holding things with fidelity. And then you've always got to provide that support. So that's me pretty well in a nutshell. What can I do for y'all today?
Oh, Mr. Tompkins, thanks for having me. I'm Tyler Arms, Finance Director here at the county. I've asked the same questions to the previous two candidates, but I think that you pretty well answered. My, it, my first question is usually on community involvement, but it sounds like you're well involved.
I would gladly work with community involvement if you want me to.
I heard you in the previous session and then I, you know, you've been involved a whole lot with the school. Uh, I'll jump to the second one. So Finters County Board of Education is, uh, it's one of the largest, if not the largest employer within Finters County. So with that being said, I'd like to know what, what your thoughts on are, or what transparency means to you, not just for the community and not just for your parents and students, but your employees as well.
I want to say this answer correctly. Open and transparent, you know, those are cliche words, something that you want to make sure that you say. But the, the truth is, and this is honest, this is an honest answer, not that all of them aren't. Kind of sounded bad. If we spend a taxpayer dollar, we ought to be willing to stand right here and tell exactly where it went. As far as being truly open and honest, that, that should be our goal. It's not our money, it's their money. And so I hope if I get to be a director, that whatever decisions I make, whatever things that I'm in control of, I can be willing and I will be willing to be able to say it openly to anyone that asks.
Thank you. Thanks you, thank you for your interest in the position as well.
Mr. Tompkins, I'm Michael Beatty. Want to thank you also for showing an interest in, in being a director of schools. Uh, really, uh, you've got a good history with our county and we appreciate the work that you've done through York Institute so far. My question is, uh, kind of associated around after school activities and how important they are, whether it be in the school system or out of the school system, such as sporting events or, um, uh, whatever, in, in, in school, uh, interact, beta, FCA and so on. But, uh, tell us, uh, tell us how you would be involved in supporting that in the community, in both aspects, in, in school and out of school system activities.
Well, Micah, as, when I was dean of students, I was over, that was, I was the overseer of all the student, uh, activities. I mean, you know, I was over beta, I was over. When I say over, we had sponsors. But, um, I have spent my life attending events. To be honest, my entire family has spent our, our lifetime attending events. If you have students doing something, they need to have people from our school that's representing our school and being a support and encouragement to our students. The same ways you do with basketball. You got, if you have a, a bowling team, they need to be, uh, as important to you as the basketball team. Now, of course, you know, safety and security goes along with that. Larger the crowd, the more you have to make sure that it's there. But for me, uh, your non-academics is what school's about for most kids. I mean, they don't jump out of the bed and say, oh yay, I get to go learn some math today. You know, what's going to be on their mind is if they're getting to have a, have a Halloween party or if there's going to be something happening in PE. If there's a, a play that's going on, if there's a, a trip that's going to happen this Saturday. You know, students are about social and the adults are about the academics. Even though I'd kind of like to change that, I really think kids want to learn. And when you engage them, I think they learn to enjoy learning. And so, uh, I, personally speaking, I've enjoyed learning over my lifetime. And I think that our educators enjoy learning and I think that that needs to be modeled into our students. But as far as non-academics, I'm, I love them. You know, that's what makes a student, that makes a school well-rounded. If you don't have them, it's a little bit blah maybe. So, um, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I, I'm certainly supportive of them.
Yeah, thank you.
Jason, I'm Billy Jennings Funeral Director, you know that, but.
Hey Billy.
Yeah. About the students, what do you think you could bring to the table to help grade school students as well as high school?
We had that question in the last interview. You know, I'm going to have to use my principles, uh, to, to teach me. What, what's quality, um, elementary, especially K1, 2, 3? That's going to be something I'm going to have to grow on. But, um, really and truly, a quality education looks the same wherever you are. Standards-based learning is what we're being paid to do. And that's what we're expected to teach our kids. And these are standards set by the state of Tennessee, not Finters County. And so you want a quality classroom that's got a quality target, targeted learning. You want quality assessments, let you know what they're learning and if they're learning it. And you want good strategies. You, the old stand to deliver method is not, that's not quality anymore. You want students that are engaged in the learning environment. And so if that's at the kindergarten level or at the, at the senior level, it's all the same. You want to make sure that that classroom is a learning environment.
I think that'll work.
Thank you, Billy.
Hello, Mr. Tompkins. I'm Jacob Rosenbaum with the Chamber of Commerce. I think I may have met you somewhere before.
We won't tell them we're cousins.
We won't tell them. With the chamber, we represent over 200 businesses in the Finters County area. And so our main concern is getting kids from the educational system into the workforce. And so my question to the previous candidates, the question I'm going to ask you is, can you commit to working with post-secondary institutions to provide more vocational education opportunities for students in Finters County?
Okay, so you're kind of speaking in my wheelhouse right now, Jacob. Through STEM and I, you know, we've done a lot in my school. We've always connected well to Rome State, TCAT, Huntsville, Oneida, Cumberland County, Overton County. We are, my York, we, we connect with Dwight Murphy over at TCAT Huntsville. We're a, we're a satellite campus for them. But what I have found, as far as post-secondary opportunities, A, they're important. They need to be into the elementary schools and the high school. But you've got to be intentional and deliberate to make those connections to students. Now something that we found at our school was that, uh, we did pretty good with maybe military fairs, military recruiters, connecting students to Rome State, connecting students to tech. But a lot of our, we found a group that was just kind of underserved. And we intentionally started reaching out to female professional, uh, people. Uh, last week, I think, yeah, last week we had an eye doctor in to speak to our students on engineering design process using the eyes. We have connected to the TBI with a, with a lady investigator. We, uh, connected with the health department with Ms. Davidson to talk to our culinary arts class. What you got to do is you got to, you got to intentionally look for those opportunities and bring them before your students. You can't run your kids all over the place. It's, it's just not, it's not feasible. You, you try, you take them when you need to or when there's opportunities to. You have to be intentional to bring that people back into your class. But here's another one that we've done. Through the STEM education, and we started it this last year, and I hope that if I get this job, I'm able to carry this into them. We have been placing our teachers in community businesses. And so we sent several teachers to PWP, to the winery and to the city of Jamestown. And what happens is our teachers know their standards. Cause you know, it's not about just a community relation thing. You've got to have an educational reason to do something. So our, our teachers know their standards. They, they know what they need to be teaching, but they might not necessarily know what's going on down at PWP or at the CD hall or at the airport or at the winery or at Micro Metals or at VEC. But if we'll send our teachers out there, let them learn what's going on inside of that, that organization, that business. And then that teacher comes back into their classroom. Well, you can't keep that, that teacher is forever changed. They have knowledge now that they've never had before. And they can start making connections literally daily about whatever it is that they're teaching, their standard and how that might relate to something that they see in our community. And so the power in that has been pretty phenomenal. And I would like to see that more incorporated all across the county.
Thank you very much.
Kevin Baz with WDEB Radio.
Hey Kevin.
And again, I echo what all of the panel has said. Uh, we appreciate your interest and your concern for the students of Finters County. Uh, Bryant Johnson, uh, from the Union Bank was not able to be here today, but he sent me a question, so I'm going to ask Bryant's question first. As we all know, 2020 took its toll on student learning, uh, across the nation as well as here during the COVID outbreak. And of course we're still battling that and, and I understand that. But we also know that face-to-face teaching is the best way to teach. Uh, we all know that, it's been proven. What are your plans? Do you have any plans and what are your plans to help students catch up for the loss in, in education over the past year and a half?
Okay, so. You know, there's a textbook answer to that. The, we have, you, you want to do your summer schools, you want to do your after school tutoring. Uh, you want to, uh, make sure you're involving your stakeholders. You want to make sure you understand what remediation is needing to take place with a student. It's one thing to say, hey, that kid's behind, but what you really need to know is what are they behind in? And you can only find out through assessment. You've got to figure out where are they? You know, it's kind of like, um, not coming up with an analogy, but anyway, you have to know what you're looking for. You know, so if a kid is, and I shouldn't say a kid, if a student is, uh, on sixth grade reading level, how do you make them an eighth grade reading level? You have to put eighth grade material in front of them. You got to make the kid, that, that student has to have something to reach towards. If you're sixth grade and you're teaching them through sixth grade, uh, material, they're not growing. You got to put something in front of them that's higher. And so for me and what I have learned, and I, to be honest, I've been taught this. I'm not, I don't know if I have a, a real genuine thought. I've, I steal everything I can from someone else. But you have to, um, you, you need to be able to do it while it's happening. You know, we've done credit recovery. I've been in charge of credit recovery for years at York. And that's in the summer, you know, the first two or three weeks of summer. And we take a kid that's failed, say ninth grade English. And then you work with them intentionally through a program or through, uh, stuff that they need to get made up. And then they're able to get that credit back. But what's most efficient is that you're working with that child as the year progresses. It's on-time remediation. And, um, you know, that's, that's difficult to find, but it's needful to find. We need to be able to work and we need to be able to work with our students as they're. We need to be able to work, we need to be able to work with our students as they're progressing, not just trying to catch them up in a chunk at the end. And then after-school is great. I love after-school. There's a lot of kids that can't do after-school. It needs to be during the school day. And that, that is where you have to get into some intentional planning. You've got to figure out, what can you move? What can we, what can we budget? How much time? And who's going to be in charge? And what are they going to be doing? What's going to be their assessment that says this is what they need to be able to learn? So it's intentional, and it's fairly work laden, but it's important for the kid.
Now, let me ask you a question from me.
Okay.
The Fentress County School System probably financially isn't the best shape it's ever been. Now, I know that there are some things that people would want or desire, but as far as, and I'm not just talking about a balance in the bank. I'm talking about our school buildings. I'm talking about equipment. I'm talking, you know, as you well know, you've been here long enough. You know, there have been lean years to where students suffered because we had to cut back programs and things like that, but in very good shape. What are your plans to continue that progress in the Fentress County School System as far as budgetary matters, things like that? Because always, there's always going to be people making a demand on the school system, and specifically you and the school board, to put money here and there. And you know, what are your plans to keep the Fentress County School System moving in a progressively positive direction financially?
First thing I've got to do is learn the budget, just like a textbook. You know, that has to be a top priority. It would be the largest budget I've been in charge of, if I get the job. And so, you know, that's a, that's a learning curve for me. I've done, I've done federal programs at York for six and a half years. Actually, this semester, I actually turned it off to a fellow worker. So I'm not over federal programs this semester. But budgetary matters is the most important. That's your taxpayer dollars. For me, I would want to have a line item budget. I want to know where the money we've spent last year. And as we build our budget in the future, we know what we've already spent. And then finding ways to figure out if that program is successful or not successful. I've looked at the overall budget, and you know, the largest expenditure is salaries, of course. But you ought to be able to figure out what you've spent, major maintenance, minor maintenance, regular maintenance. Need to know what your bussing's costing, and then just line item it out. And so then you've got something to work with. It's not just a big chunk. You know, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So once I learn the budget, then you have to come into planning. You know, you can't, you can't go build a school because you just decided to today. It takes making decisions based on where your need lies. I think right now, Allard, Pine Haven, South Fentress, those three elementary schools have got reasonably new buildings. York Elementary, obviously not. Clark Range High School, not. Clark Range High School does have a new, it's like a half facility, or you know, it's a really nice addition out there. But there would have to be some equity in how we're looking at budgeting moving forward. And I'm not saying that there's not. I think Mr. Jones has done a phenomenal job with withholding the budget. He's, and I just give him kudos for that. And I would want to be able to do that as well. The big thing is, if we spend it, we ought to be able to tell about it. Not that he's not either. I'm not suggesting anything in that direction. I'm just saying, planning, knowing where the money's going, and having a clear and concrete direction for where you're going to put that money. And then I want equity. There needs to be fairness in our schools. How'd I do?
Good. Can I tack a B part onto that?
Go ahead.
Of course, it's easy to keep things in the positive when you've got stuff like ESAR funds. Those are not going to be around forever, you know. So again, and I think you answered it, you're going to have to be very careful and watch and consider the fact that you won't always have those.
Yeah, you can't depend on ESAR funds. You've got three years with those. But it's a nice chunk. And so you better, you better grab what you can. Now, this job I've been told is going to come in at July 1, I think. And so that budget will be set. So I'll have a year to really dig in and learn. Really, I have about six months, because I'll need to be planning with that budget in the spring of 2023. And so I'll have a short time. But then, you know, your schools know what they need. It's just getting it driven down into a workable solution of what you need. And then you're bored. You know, that's the people that's being elected by the people to have their voice. And you've got to give them their input, and they know what they need too, or what they want. And so it's filtering those things down into a workable plan, and then moving forward with it.
Thank you.
Jason, I'm Lee Little. I've had the good fortune to meet with you several times in my former role as Vocational Director for the county. I would like to thank you for what you have done and tried to do for the students of the county, because I think you have worked toward that. That's an important goal of all of ours. Actually, my first question was on your experience in the budget, but I think you pretty well covered, answered that on that one. But another one is, Fentress County is comprised of five schools, four of them being elementary schools. And I believe you're probably pretty well adequately prepared for dealing with the high school. But how would you deal with the leadership of the elementary schools instructionally?
I answered that sort of in the first round. I'll go back to, what is quality education? And so, and I realize, you know, my experience is at the high school level. That's been my bread and butter. But a quality educational system was going to have similar traits in whatever grade it is. You want quality instruction based on standards. You want to see quality assessment going on. Whereas, I'll just throw these questions out. I was taught these. I didn't come up with them. You know, what do you want your students to know? How are you going to get them to know it? How are you going to know if they do know it? What are you going to do with them if they don't know it? And then finally, what are you going to do if they do know it? And so that's just quality instruction, you know, every day, targeted instruction. And so if you're at the kindergarten level, and you have, you should have a purpose, a target for that lesson today, you should be able to know if they're going to be able to get it. You know, when you get done with your lesson, you should be able to know, did my students master what I wanted them to teach, or what I wanted them to learn? And if they didn't master it, what do I need to do? And so I realize my high school level is where I am, but quality instruction is the same all the way down.
Thank you. I taught elementary for 20 years before I got into high school, and all I can say is God bless our elementary teachers. I honestly don't know if I could do that today. I'm telling you, they have a hard road to go. Thank you.
Julie Matthews, Fifth District Commissioner.
Hey, Julie.
Hi, Jason. My question for you today is, tell us about your code of ethics, and would you apply that same code to students as you would to your staff, your teachers, and yourself?
My code of ethics, well, of course, there is a Tennessee teacher code of ethics that we train on every year. That's required by, that's required by law. But I would expect myself to model the code of ethics first. Three people the way you want to be treated, live by the golden rule, be as kind as possible, be honest, be open. Heaven forbid, don't do anything that's going to create a scandal. I would hold myself to a higher accountability than I would everyone else. And I think I've modeled that over the years in my current position. And then I would hold expectations on those that are doing the same. I mean, you know, if I'm going to hold myself, I would also ask my principals to hold their teachers and carry it all the way down. Our students deserve for people to be ethical, and they deserve people that are honest and trustworthy. And our parents deserve that for their children to go into our classrooms. They should be able to trust us. And truth, if they can't trust us, there's never going to be a real bonding between a student, a parent, and a teacher. And so I guess my code of ethics first, you know, I'm going to follow the law, which is absolutely set forward, but I'm going to do my best to model my expectations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
So you briefly, well, you've touched on your, you've got some knowledge of budgeting and how you would like to go about budgeting. But during the budget season, your, the Board of Ed budget will be due to the County Budget Committee by May the first. My question is, is do you have a plan, or how involved do you plan on having your department heads and your team in the formation of that budget?
Oh, I wouldn't even think about not having them involved. I have learned, sometimes the hard way. A collective decision is much better than an individual decision. And so when it comes to planning, you know, for schools, how on earth could you, you know, how would I know what's best for Pine Haven? You have to bring in not just Jerry and William, but you'd also want to bring in your teachers. Honestly, I'd want to bring in everyone. Not necessarily everyone, but a collection of ideas from everyone. And then you bring in your community, you have to have your board. And so you just sit down and you start fleshing out what you need. You know, what do you need? You know, and then what do you want? That's two different things. But, and then you have to think beyond this year. You have to start reaching out to two and three, and even up to five years, of what do you expect? I use the example of a new school. I mean, you know, that's not going to happen overnight. And I'm not suggesting we need a new school. I'm just saying, just as an example. But that would have to take strategically, or strategic planning. You would have to figure out, how am I going to get the loan? How am I going to get the money? How am I going to meet those bills? Where am I going to meet that in the budget that I have? And so it's just methodical, slow, and sometimes hard work.
Mr. Tompkins, I believe this was mentioned in the first session, a little bit talking about teacher shortage, whether it be our full-time teachers, our substitutes, or even additional staff. Give us some ideas of what you would do to support teachers, staff that you have now in the school, or in the schools, and what you could do to help retain them.
I think there's some different answers to that, Micah. One of the things I would like to make sure that we had was a strong mentorship program in our county. I've not always had that at York. This year, I've got, I've got a lady that's mentoring. Everyone's got two or less years of instruction. She's very intentional. It's not putting someone that's, say, an overlord or an administrator, it's someone that's very successful, and they've got a good heart about them, they're kind, and they're accessible. And they go and talk to those teachers that are new, and they help build their capacity. They help build their, they encourage them, they get targeted with what they can do to work with them. And when those teachers see that they're able to have that person that they can bounce stuff off of and not be, not a gotcha, it's a real help that you begin to see people that's growing, and they've got a voice, and they feel like they're doing things correctly. Because especially new teachers, you know, it's, it's an overwhelming world. You have these students placed in front of you, and you're in charge of teaching them everything they're supposed to know on a subject. And so you want to take away that feeling of overwhelmness. That's very important. And then as far as pay for subs, staff, cafeterias, bussing, I don't want to be a pie-in-the-sky guy. I know everything's on a budget. But I also know that you should be able to average with like systems in the upper Cumberland. Now, well, we can't compare to Putnam County, nor their tax base. But if you value someone, you'll pay them. And a substitute, I've been a substitute. That's a hard job. And you're putting a substitute in place of a teacher. And I don't know if that's through a salary increase, or if it's continuing with the bonuses that they've got set in place now. I like bonuses myself. It gives a little bit of teeth to something. You know, if you, if you, I think maybe, I believe I'm correct, if you meet all that you're being asked to do in a semester, plus you've missed five or less days, maybe I think there is a bonus. So maybe increase that bonus, maybe longevity. Put some, you have a one-year employee versus a 20-year employee. You know, you ought to be able to reward that. Because the longer you can keep consistent with something, the better off you are. But valuing people, and I'd love to get some of our educators back that's left.
Thank you.
Jason, I think Kevin touched on this question some, but do you foresee a new building anywhere, or just repair to the old? I know York is getting some repairs at this time. And do you see that happening to all the others? And how will you face that?
Billy, that's a question I can't answer. I want to answer it. I don't want to sit up here and look like I don't know the answer to something. But just to be quite honest with you, I don't know the answer. I think all of us can openly see that York Elementary and Clark Range High School are two very aging structures. And if you're going to move forward, you'll put value on your facilities. And that is one of the ways that you show that you have value in a facility. You know, the American dream is to do better and build stronger and look better and have the white picket fence and the house, and the two children in the yard. But I would be false to say that I would not like to see our facilities match across the county. Pine Haven has a good-looking facility. Allard has a good-looking facility. South Fentress has a good-looking facility. Clark Range High School's got a new facility addition, but they're still using the old. And it's great looking, and I think Mike's done a phenomenal job of keeping up, you know, maintaining and trying to find ways. But, you know, if we value our schools, we've got to figure out what we're going to do with them. And then you've got to either take care of them, or look at a way to make them look better, or ultimately build something different. But I don't know the answer. I do know that our community and our board and our education system would know the answer over time. Some of these questions could get me in a bind, you know? But at the same time, I'm trying to be honest. Trying to. Listen at me. At the same time, I'm being honest.
I am not a crook. Jason, this is a big job. This is arguably one of the most important jobs in the community. So my question's very open-ended. Why do you want to be the Director of Fentress County Schools?
You have to give me a second on that one. Okay, I've spent my career in education. And really, I've spent, you're going to make me cry. So, you know, there's a lot that goes in that. I taught, I was dean of students, I'm principal, federal programs director. I've substituted, I've driven school buses, I've been the pep club coach, I've been to hundreds of ball games. I've spent my career in education. Brandy and I talked a little bit about this concept. You know, she was a teacher, I was at York. And, but we really didn't drive into it too much, because just to be honest, I always figured I'd use my career at York Institute. And so, and I've got a good career at York Institute. I'm very blessed. And I've worked hard. And I've given a lot to York, but I've given a lot to our students. I've given, and my family sacrificed a lot, probably more than they should have. I've probably been more career-driven than family-driven at times in my life. But at this point, I am basically roughly 23 years into my career. I feel like I've got something to offer. I think this is an important decision for our county. I think this is an important decision for our county. And I, I would be arrogant to say that I'm just the right man for the job. However, I do think I've got some qualities that would be beneficial to this. I think I have evolved into somebody becoming more solution-driven. And I think that I've got a pretty good grasp on what a quality education looks like. And I'm doing pretty good about seeing that that takes place in my school. And I think, I hate to say going out because that's not what my intentions are. I think for me, I, I grew from a teacher, I grew into an assistant principal, I grew into a, a, a principal. And I think I would grow into this. And I, and I would try to bring people with me as I went. You know, it's, I've never spent my life thinking about what I've accomplished. As a matter of fact, it's hard to, for me to even discuss what I have accomplished. Because I've always wondered about, I'm always concerned with what somebody that I'm working with is accomplishing. But really, I'm most concerned with what my students are accomplishing. So, why do I want the job? I feel like I can do it. I feel like I'd be a, a benefit. I feel like my style is something that would be a positive for our community. Uh, it's, it's been my career. And that's where I plan on staying. I don't know if I answered that question good or not.
I appreciate your honest answer.
Jason, if I can call you Jason, because we've been,
Sure.
We've been friends for a long time. I know your stand on things. I know your Christian faith. I know we live in the South in the Bible Belt. And I know we have a very close-knit, loving community that, that God is important in this community. We all know what happened in Loudoun County, Virginia, and we don't want that to happen here. Should you be faced with that issue? I'm talking about a transgender issue. Should you be faced with that issue, knowing what you believe? And possibly what the law might press you into? How would you handle a situation like that? And, and in fact, I can go a step further. I know that we have had an issue like something similar in the, in this county in the past. So what, what have you, I know you've thought about it. What, how would you handle a situation like that in dealing with that?
The same as any hot topic issue. It's not about personal opinions. In those situations with public tax dollars. You know, if we're in a private school, we can handle it however we want to. But in the public arena, you handle things through board policy and state tax statute. And that's what I would be as a director. That's exactly what I would carry out. So, um, your, your, your policy has to reflect what is lawful and then what is expected. And so, that's, that's where you start. And regardless of your personal feelings on something, you've got to do thus saith the law. And so, my job would be to carry out that. And personally speaking, sometimes it's hard to carry out the law when you have a, an opinion one way or the other on something. But my, my position would be, because I would have to protect that board, the board's protecting you as a community, it would be my job to carry out the wishes of the board on that.
And you, you have to protect the board, but you also have to protect the students. So that's what I'm saying. This is such a touchy issue, but you have to protect the students. Because that's your responsibility as well. And, and so that's, that's why I was asking if, if you had a workaround, a solution that could protect students, but yet keep you in compliance.
I don't know that I have a workaround. I, my, my stance would be follow the, follow the policy, follow the law. That's, that would be my stance.
Thank you.
Top three expectations for my principals? Focus on student learning. Uh, you know, it's so easy to get wrapped up into all the ins and the outs of school, the issues, the social drama. You know, you can, there's always something that you can get, get focused on. But I think at the, at the top level, you've always got to drive back down to what's going to be best for the students. And I know at times I've not always been that way, but I can see the value of it. And then if it's an issue that, that has nothing to do with student learning, uh, figure out why are we, why is that important? You know, and sometimes it is. It might be a, an academic bowl that you're discussing or, or whatever it may be. But as far as leaders, let's be solution-driven. Let's, uh, let's focus on student learning. Let's make sure that we're modeling the behavior that we want others to follow. That's a big one. You know, not, what is it? Do as I say, say as I, what is, how's that go? Make sure we're, we're doing as we say. And then, you know, quality instruction. I still believe that's what the purpose of the school system is, is to teach every child the most that we can teach them. So I guess that's my answer.
Jason, what are your guiding principles in life?
Guiding principles? I think I wrote those down, or something along those lines, so I made sure I, I hit them correctly. You know, when you're, when you're preparing for all this, you're trying to make, man, I want to make sure I get all the right answers. But so far, I'm doing pretty good, I think, with just telling you from the heart. Uh, guiding principles, I'm a Christian by faith. It's not my job in the public arena to preach to students or to talk about one religion over another. That's not, that's not my place. But it is also because of my guiding principles, I have to answer to a higher power. And so, I have to live in a, in a manner that says that. I believe in students. I love students. I can say that absolute. I love to see students learn. You know, it's not just about loving on them, it's also putting the right curriculum and instruction in front of them so that we can grow them because that's our job. And our community depends on us when they hand our student, their child over to us seven hours a day. That's our job, is to be teaching them what they're supposed to be learning, as says the state of Tennessee. And so, guiding principles, my faith, believing in students, and the, the job at hand is to make sure that they're learning.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome. Maybe time to take questions from the crowd. Thank you all for being here today. That's my parents sitting there on the front row.
Apologize, got distracted. So that'll end this session today. We appreciate each and every one of you showing up here today, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate that very much. Uh, we will start our next session at 3:15 PM with faculty and staff. And like I said, at our live session, I understand that some of the teachers are not able to get here at 3:15. However, if you show up at 3:30 or at 4 o'clock, I will let you speak. So I just want you to all be aware of that. I want people to have their say. So with that, we'll end at, Mr. Tompkins, thank you and thank you folks for showing, for coming.
Thank you all for coming in.
This is our last candidate for the position of Director of Schools for Fentress County, Mr. Jason Tompkins. And we'll follow the same guidelines we did in the previous candidates. Rules are the candidate will give about a 10-minute introduction of themselves, followed by 50 minutes or so of questioning. And like I said earlier, if any more teachers or sports staff comes in, we'll obviously let them speak and ask a question if they'd like to. So when we start, we'll start at the left side of the podium and we'll go around and then we'll have a follow-up question from that. And this session will end at 4:30. So in saying that, welcome, Mr. Tompkins, this afternoon, and we'll turn it over to you, sir.
There he goes. Thank you for coming. I'm hoping some more will come. I would love to answer questions if I could. It's better to be open about it than to not be known. So, uh, I'm going to spare you the details of my life history. Simply because I think everyone in here pretty well knows my life history. I've, uh, I'll give you a quick version, a read or digest version. So I was born and raised in Armuthwaite. Mom and dad, Larry and Wanda Tompkins. I married Brandy. Uh, we have two beautiful children, Ashlyn and Seth. I taught English for, let's see, since the fall of 1999. I taught English nine, English 10, a couple of world geographies in a reading class. And somewhere in there, I did some type of a computer class. But for eight years, then I became Dean of Students. And I did that for basically eight years. And then for the last six and a half years, I've been Principal, Federal Projects, Federal Programs Director at Allen C. York Institute. Uh, I taught in the county as a substitute for the spring of 1999. I've driven a school bus for 20 years. Just this semester, I've let my school bus license go. And I've been a pep club coach and I've been a school bus driver and I've been a disciplinarian and I've been Federal Programs Director and I've been a substitute and a lunch server and a bathroom cleaner. And I've taught and I've learned to teach and I've taught others what, uh, quality teaching is supposed to look like. So here I am and I surely appreciate you coming out. What can I, how can I answer your questions? Got to push the little button on there and a little red light will come on.
Problem is, my eyes are too old to see the red light. Okay. Hello, Mr. Tompkins, I'm Anita Johnson, York Elementary, third, or no, sorry.
Hello, Anita.
Fourth and fifth grade. I have a quick question for you. I know you said all your experience has been in the high school.
That's correct.
And I do teach, you know, elementary. So how do you plan to, I guess, evaluate the programs that we have in the elementary, the K-8, preschool, D-8? And just learn about those programs and, and decide what programs you want to keep, what programs you don't want to keep? Our curriculum, pacing guides, those kinds of things?
That's a big question.
It is a big question.
So let's start at the top. How would I, start, start at the top of your question there? What's the?
Just how, like, how do you plan to transition from most of your knowledge is high school to learning? Because that's a lot to learn about the, at the elementary curriculums, programs, pacing guides, those kinds of things. How do you plan to, and, or, and,
I got you. I'm with you. So let's, uh, let's start with what's important. Uh, well, everything's important, but what would you look for in a school? I would dare say, Anita, that you could go into a high school, being a fourth and fifth grade teacher, and over a short amount of time, be able to determine what's quality education going on in a classroom. So my job as director, if I get that job, would be to expect a quality education inside of any classroom. And what is that? That's standards-based learning with quality targets, daily learning expectations for your students with solid strategies to reach those expectations and some understanding of assessment of whether they're getting it or not each day. So that goes from kindergarten to senior. I mean, there's no difference in what a quality education is. It's, uh, it's deliberate, high-quality instruction in the classroom. And so, you know, I know a kindergarten class is going to look different than a senior English class. But over time, I call them three-minute pops. You can, you can find out an amazing amount about a classroom over time in three minutes. If you go in, you can see what a teacher's doing, what a student's doing, and what's the classroom management or environment looks like. Now, you can't judge anybody on one time. That's ridiculous. But if you make 10 three-minute pops in a, in a semester, you've got a pretty good picture of what's going on in there over time. And then, you know, as long as my principals, my, our principals are, are seeing the same thing, uh, you can have a pretty good understanding of whether you've got quality education going on in your classroom or not. As far as evaluation of programs, that's something that's important. And there should be some kind of data that drives decisions. Uh, you know, if you're in ELA, you've got percentages of on-track mastery. If you are in, uh, if it's graduation rate at the high school level, data's very accessible. If you're in a fifth-grade math class, uh, you know, your CFAs, and I think you're using case benchmark test, there's some strong data that's produced right there. So there's some, it's pretty simple to, to find something that takes away the feeling about something and proves what it is that you're looking for or what you're lacking. And then that just means here's something we can work on.
Brendan Kraut, South Fentress Elementary.
Hey, Brendan.
I'm here with some questions from teachers on that end. First question is, um, some would like to know what your top three priorities are for the district? And if any of those include changes for maybe the first year of your, you get into office?
That could be a, boy, that could be a hot topic question right there, Brendan, but it's a good question. So if I was granted this job and, and I was able to, to get the, the directorship job, my first three months, I'm going to be building relationships, learning everything I can about our system and trying to build plans for the next year. I mean, that's, that's my first three-month plan. It's, it's not to make changes. Now, if there's a safety concern or something major is just obvious, of course you'll make a change. But everything else, I, I would just want to dig in and learn and build. And then, uh, plan, because planning's where it all starts.
Can I, um, add on to that?
Sure.
Um, you talked about building relationships, fostering that. How would you feel that your current school and students and parents would, would feel about your building relationships?
Well, you know, I've not asked them, but I think they would be pretty pro-Jason. I think they would say that, Mr. Tompkins, my students, personally speaking, I think they would say that I'm kind, that I'm considerate, that I try to be funny when possible. I'm direct, I'm clear with my expectations. And I encourage, and I'll do my best for them. I think that's what they would say.
All right, Mr. Tompkins, Jenny Dixon, Federal, Federal Programs Director for the Board of Education. So I understand you have some federal budget experience, but my question for you today is, we have just gotten our S R three funds approved, which is the last,
Congratulations.
Yes, we're excited. But along with that comes lots of construction. How familiar are you with the rules and federal rules and regulations concerning construction projects?
Well, I helped build the S R three budget at York, facilities needs, maintenance needs, making sure that you're addressing the 20% learning loss. So, you know, it's a process, but I'm, I'm fairly fluent in federal programs. Uh, you know, you, you can use it for X amount of facilities, obviously HVAC, uh, things that you can relate to COVID experiences for social distancing, for, uh, uh, to re, remove, you know, harmful bacteria, or not bacteria, but like mold and those type of things. Ventilation, I don't know if I answered your question.
Are you familiar with Davis Bacon requirements and the Edgar Rules and Regulations Book?
Yes, I have gone through several trainings on Edgar.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
My first training, I thought he was a person.
The spending decisions have already been made, but the construction projects are just beginning, so I didn't know how much experience you'd have with that. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Tompkins, my name is Tanya Demers and I'm the GP Bookkeeper for Fentress County. Hi, Mr. Tompkins. My name is Tanya Demers, and I'm the GP bookkeeper for Fincher County Board of Education. Um, I was, I'm good. How are you?
Fine.
I was just wondering if you could tell us what your three greatest strengths that you would bring to this position are?
I think I hit one of them with Brandon. I, I really do believe building relationships, maintaining relationships is a strong suit. I, I seem to have done well with that over the last twenty years, twenty-two years at York. I, I actually reached out and asked some fellow administrators, and I said, what, you know, what are my strengths? I, I knew what I felt like, but I didn't know what other people saw me as. And the first one was, uh, Jason, you're great with people. One actually said, Jason, you can get along with people that don't necessarily like you. And I thought, you know, that's a pretty good compliment, especially in my position. You've got to be able to find a way to, uh, to, even when you're in disagreement, to be able to get along. And then, um, I am a firm believer in students and that the educational system's job is to educate students. And that, uh, education isn't just a haphazard way or thought process, that it's, uh, there's proven ways to educate, and that's what we need to make sure that we're doing. And so educational strengths, one more. I've written these down, so I wouldn't forget them. What did I wrote for my last, what did I write for my last one? Three different papers up here. Oh, and I even wrote down my biggest, biggest weakness, too. Oh, strategic planning, which is a good one, and I wasn't ever very good at it until the last couple of years. I spent a lot of time with planning. Uh, when we introduced STEM into our school, I wasn't even for sure what STEM really meant. And so I had to begin to plan. And through the planning process, you're not just planning for a concept, you're planning for implementation. And so it takes, it takes understanding, then it takes professional development, then it takes implementing, and then it takes support of those that are doing the implementation, and then it takes fidelity monitoring. And through the process, it's amazing what you're able to do. So I would think, even though I'm not perfect at it, it's something that I really do think I'm, I'm getting much better at. And I think it's useful.
Hello, Jason.
Hey, how are you?
I'm fine. Um, I just wanted to ask you a question about STEM. So I know that York Institute is on track to be certified or designated a STEM school this year. So STEM is near and dear to my heart and has been for many years. So what would be your vision for our elementaries and high school if you were chosen?
Okay, so now you're, you're right there in my wheelhouse. It's taken me a, a journey to get to STEM. Uh, it was scary for me, science, technology, engineering, and math. Those do not fit in my mind in the ELA world that I came up through, you know? So I go into an Algebra II classroom and I'm usually in awe, you know, of what teachers are able to teach students to do, or a pre-CAL or a CAL class. And so that's what I connected to STEM. But that's the wrong thing. STEM is not a person, it's not a class, it's a philosophy. And it's saying, we want to create better thinkers and problem solvers using science, technology, engineering, math. We've connected ELA, computer science, um, in our vocational classes, all to our STEM program. And, and we drive it from the thinking process, the engineering design process. And so it allows you, it, it gives you the vehicle to collaborate across curriculums. You have to be intentional about it. You have to find where your connections are. But it's honestly powerful. And so when you cause kids to begin to think, and then you show them and model with them how to think, and then that they have to collaborate, and that you use these higher-order skills, science, technology, engineering, math, that's, that's high order. And you start connecting those to real-world problem solving and make learning relevant. It's a powerful thing. Now, at the high school level, I'd be fairly strong, honestly. I'm not perfect at it by any means. I've learned a lot. But I think I could definitely assist, guide, and direct to implement STEM at the high school level. I think also at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, I could be pretty strong. Down into the elementary, the K through five, uh, I would need some training. But the thing about training, I like it. I don't like if it's just for whatever purpose in the world, but if it's targeted training and it's useful and it's been proven to work, I'm all for it.
Mr. Tompkins, you touched just a little bit on learning loss. And for me, that's been pretty significant, because I had several kids last year who would get quarantined as a family, then they'd be back, and then they'd be gone again because they've gotten COVID. So how do you, like, in our county, we have, um, extended learning program, and then we have, um, summer camp we had this summer, but not all kids are able to go to those two programs. So what program initiative do you have in mind for our, to help us get our learning loss? For our kids caught up, the kids who have learning loss caught up?
Anita, you know the answer to part of this without even asking the question. When is the best time to address a kid or a student that's, uh, suffering from learning loss? Is it during the summer? It's on time. I've looked at your schedules, and I'm, in my mind, and I, and I've learned this. Of course, at the high school, you can create a, a skinny block, and we've not done that this year. Next year, we'll have a skinny block. But remediation needs to come as an ongoing thing and not as just an after effect, even though you need those things. I've done credit recovery for years at high school. I've been over the summer credit recovery. Uh, I've watched over and been in charge of and done, uh, you know, after-school tutoring. But we're going to use S R funds to address learning loss ourselves as soon as they're approved. And we're hopefully to be approved soon. Jenny, I'm excited about that. But, uh, we're going to tie after-school tutoring, and we're going to pay our teachers very well to, to stay three, up to three hours a week. But the connection is, they have to have a student in front of them. So that's one way. It's a little way, but there's a lot of kids that can't do after-school. There's a lot of kids that struggle with doing summer school. But from your schedule, if we're, if there was a way, and I, and, you know, I can't do this on the first day, but I actually told the principals today, I'll bet you if it really became important to us, we could put it together, we could flesh out some time, that there was a remediation moment, a remediation twenty minutes. I don't know. I don't know how much time is needed in a school day, that kids that are following behind and are behind are able to be caught up. And you know, I, for years, I taught different, different, different things. And lots of times, I would teach kids at the level they are. You can't, you can't grow a student, teach them at the level they are. Every good teacher knows you have to put something above their level. If you're going to grow somebody, you've got to get them something that they can pull up torch and not keep them at the same level. So and then another thing is remediation has to follow, you have to know exactly what they're behind in. You can't be just, you know, it's not a shotgun approach. You have to be targeted in what they need. There's my answer.
All right, this has a couple of questions in it, so, um, if you need me to repeat it, just no big deal. How do you build your leadership team? And what do you think about when you put people together to run the district or fulfill, um, your long-range plans, short-term plans? And how's that going to affect their current administrations in terms of school teams or also district-level staff?
If I get this job and it starts July one, my, uh, my first thought, my, my initial plans, I would make absolutely no changes in any of the administration or team levels at our schools. I would just dig in and start learning and seeing what, and, and here's the reason I say that. Every time there's an administrative change, and I've gone through several at my school. I've worked under Dr. Young, I've worked under Mr. Brandon, I've worked under Dr. Miller, now I'm working under Mr. Bush. E- each time you have an administrative change at the top, um, everyone's gets to kind of reset, you might say, just a little. I mean, you know, everyone is who they are, but everyone gets the opportunity to take a breath and reset and decide, you know, how do they want to go and what they want to do and how they want to be. And so I think it would be, honestly, upheaval to go in and make a bunch of changes with no knowledge. So my thought there is no changes at all. And then as the year progresses, as things are brought up and my administrative teams are working together and we're clicking and we're finding ways to be solution-driven, you know, if changes come, we'll know what those are and we'll have our reasons for our changes. It won't be just a feeling.
Are you familiar with the statement, if you can see it, you can be it? Pertaining to younger children? I really believe that, but in Fincher County, we don't have that many opportunities locally, so we have to go out of the county borders to see things, careers. So how could you support that and would you be willing to support that effort?
Hmm, are you, I'm connecting it to Epsos. Is that where you're kind of going in your mind? Okay, I love Epsos. Of course, I'm at the high school level, which is a little obviously different. But some of the things we're doing could be run all the way down to the kindergarten level, level. So what we have learned is that you have to be intentional, you have to be looking for those opportunities. So one of the things we discovered at our schools that our, our, uh, our female population did not have a lot of professional jobs in our areas that, you know, really come to the front. You had teachers and you had healthcare workers and outside of that bankers. But, um, and, and we have other professionals and lots of them in our community, but you know, it's not ne- necessarily what they saw every day. And that was a group of students that our data proved was struggling with their Epsos. Of course, they're required to have Epsos at high school. And, uh, so we have been intentional. We have invited several different female professionals into our school. So it, you're, instead of trying to haul kids to an eye doctor, we ask an eye doctor to come to us. And, you know, they don't want to spend all day lots of times, and technology allows you to allow them to come in for thirty minutes. They can be recorded, and then you can show that four more times through the day through your blocks. Another way that we've been able to, uh, build some, uh, or some post-secondary opportunity, options, you might say, is we put our teachers out into the community, and then they become the experts. So last summer, we sent several of our teachers to P W P, uh, to the city of Jamestown and to the winery, because our teachers know their standards, but they may or may not know what's going on inside of those, those organizations and those businesses. And then they spend the day not, not learning, not trying to teach those businesses what we're doing. No, they spend the day, I said, not learning, but learning about those businesses, and they bring it back into their classrooms. And then they share out with my teachers as well. And so at that point, you're pulling in community organization and businesses every day into your classrooms, because you can't unlearn something. And so once you've got it, then you start making connections to it. And so can you do that at the, at the lower elementary? Absolutely. I know we've, just this semester, we've had, um, in culinary arts, we had Kim Davison with the health inspector. We had a lady from a, from a, uh, eye doctor, I think, over in Crossville. Uh, we had a lady with a T B I, an investigator, and we put them in front of our students. And we let them tell them about their careers and what they're doing, and we usually connect it to the E D P.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tompkins, um, it is now being said that the number one health concern of high school students is stress. Uh, we are, it's filtered down into the, since the pandemic started, into the elementary age level. Lots of stress with students. Do you have thoughts on how you can meet the social, emotional, learning needs of students?
Uh, absolutely. First of all, you have quality counselors in your school. That's very important. And it's because it's, it's not stress on just a school level, it's stress on a student level. You know, you've got to have someone for that child that doesn't understand how to deal with what they're dealing with. And when I say educational guidance, it's, it's the, it's the educational guidance counselor's job to keep within the realms of the educational world. But they should have connections if there needs to be more, and they should be trained in what does it, what does that look like if they're not being able to reach or meet what that student needs? But then overall, you have to keep your students, they have to have a feeling of encouragement. I know, like for me, every day I do my announcements. You might think that's a little thing, and I've never done it. It's my first year doing it. It's amazing, absolutely amazing how many comments I get in a day. Because I usually try to start out with something like, good, you know, good morning, uh, hope you had a great weekend. Uh, we've got a three-day week last week or this week's Thanksgiving. Hope you're thankful today. You know, at this time, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. And then if I, if somebody's done something good, some group, some organization, some student, I'll say, I want to give out a shit, you know, a shot, a shout-out to so-and-so or, you know, a bunch of crazy fools at the ballgame last night. I couldn't hardly get over you, you know, just, you got to have some levity. Students have got to have some humor, they got to have some, um, they got to have some feeling. You know, they're a feeling bunch of people, and then you got to build them up. Uh, you can't, um, I heard some, I heard a preacher say one time that sheep have to be fed every day and you can only shear them about once a year. And so I, that stuck with me. You know, if you're shearing your kids all the time, well, you just keep them beat down. But if you're encouraging them, it's amazing. Something that I have done personally for the last several years, I make an intentional, uh, I make it intentional to smile at my students, even when I don't feel like smiling. I smile. And, you know, this week, I, I just, I'll give you a, a quick one. When I walked into my office after a Thursday morning, I had a note that said, "Mr. Tompkins, thank you for making my, thank you for making me smile every morning during school, every morning at school." And I thought, wow, that's powerful. All that was is me doing an announcement. But you got to take into consideration the stress. I'll tell you some other things we do. You know, school's about learning. I'm all about learning. But you've got to have some enjoyment in school, too. Every semester, we have a faculty versus student volleyball game. We have pep rallies. We, uh, uh, we use Dragon's Renaissance in our school and we use it heavily. Uh, we are doing reward systems for attendance. We have a week, a month, a quarter, and a semester and a year reward system for good, for perfect attendance. Uh, and you can, you know, catch in every week. And then we have really happy people that get on and give out awards over the intercoms. And it's those things, and if you are consistent with it, then those students feel like, you know what, we're in a positive environment. And, uh, you know, it, it's a, it's a good place to be. And, and you know, we are going to be stressed, and so we have to teach them how to deal with some stress, too. But we want the stress to be about educational struggles, trying to get better, and not about whether they're going to eat well or what they, that they don't have somebody in school that cares about them.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about your greatest weakness?
I could, that was a struggle I had to find. I've got a lot of weaknesses. So, um, obviously, I'm not perfect, but that's not a weakness, that's just honesty. There's been times in my life I spread myself too thin. There was one semester in school that I was principal, federal programs director. I was chief substitute, I was over the substitutes, and I was fifth block disciplinarian. And I was also a substitute bus driver. And, um, that, that's, that's not making a, that's not a, um, a brag. That's, that's truth. But when you spread yourself too thin, and I allowed myself to do that, I took on too many jobs, um, you, you can't give the jobs at hand what you need to give it. Something's going to suffer. And instead of, uh, you know, one of, a weakness there, A, taking on too many, and B, not reaching out for help. Because I, I'm a responsible person. I always have been. If it's my responsibility, I feel like I've got to do it. And then you allow yourself to kind of get in the box, and you can't do it. And so ways that I have overcome that is, uh, making lists, checklists, accountability partners, and that's a, that's a word I didn't even know what it really meant. But now I'm much more apt to say, hey, this is something I've got to get done by Friday. I've got to get done by Friday. On Thursday, you look me in the face and say, Jason, have you got that done yet? And they'll do it. People do that every time you'll ask them. And then, um, you know, checklist, that setting goals. The power of a goal is phenomenal. If you don't know what you're shooting at, you'll never hit it. So that's, that's it. That's my weakness. Well, I mean, that's one of my weaknesses. I can also ramble.
Do you feel like it's the superintendent's job or the principal's job to hire the teachers for their building?
Oh, I, I've already answered that question today. Uh, I've done it both ways. I have been a part of the interview committee. I have been a recommender for the interview committee and I have been the, when I say recommender, I've been kind of the, you know, the chief decider in interview committee. And then I've also been the one that's been the recommender of the hire. The power of being the, of allowing the principal to hire their people is strong. Because if I am responsible for making the decision to hire someone, which I have been in my school, then I want that person to be successful because my name's tied to it. I'm saying this is the best person for that job and I want to do everything I can to make sure that person is successful. Because if they're successful, then I've done a good job. So I want to make sure I put everything I can into that. If I'm just handed someone, then they're still my responsibility and I'm going to do my best with. But I don't have that buy-in to the same degree. But I, I firmly believe that our principals need to be taken care of the instructional staff at their school. When I say taken care of, hiring their instructional staff at their school. Now, at the district level, I think that's the director's job.
Um, like many districts, Fentress County does have instructional coaches that works with teachers, worked with, um, their administration as well. Um, how do you view instructional coaches and, um, what types of things would you, um, want to, uh, change or encourage in the, in that program?
Brandon, that goes back to the change. Um, I, I have no intentions of making any changes right off the bat. I, I'm not, uh, I don't want to sound redundant in that, but you've got to learn before you make changes. Uh, to be, if you jumped off the hip on that one, I, I don't think that's wise. So changing, uh, would not be really in my repertoire right off the bat as far as people. So I think evaluation is good and I don't think that I'm the only, the, the end result of, of having all the knowledge. I think that's where you use your principals and assistant principals and you look at what you're implementing and who's doing it and how they're doing it. And is it being successful? What does success look like?
To, to add on to that, um, you've discussed how you don't really feel like making any kind of changes at the beginning, kind of just kind of coming in, in the role, seeing how things are working, seeing what's working well and what's not. Um, a lot of teachers, to add on to that, um, have questions about changes just in general, whether it's what changes you have to the dress code, what changes you might have to, um, programs or like, I know many teachers have felt there's grants to be had. There's lots of programs that can come into the district and we have many of those, um, types of things in place or have in the past. And, um, one concern for teachers is too many things that kind of wear them thin as the answer to the response you had over there about sometimes you kind of felt like you were worn thin because of the responsibilities that you took on. And I think, um, some of the teachers that I've talked to have had some of those concerns as well, just about, um, their fear of what, whatever director is put in, um, what changes they'll make regard, regard to a great number of things. Like I said, the, the school dress code policy for them or the programs that they're expected to do or the duties that they might have to do. Um, so your response to all that is at the beginning, you have no reason to change anything?
No, I didn't say that. I have no reason to change people until I learn how things are going with the ones that are in place. Um, I would hope that if there's a lot of overwhelming and fearful thoughts going on inside of a school system, that, that sounds a little bit what you're saying, that, um, being solution driven more, uh, focusing on our students, looking at what we really need to be looking at and maybe not necessarily all of the issues. I, I don't know. I'm getting bound up in my question. Change is something that's difficult. As a matter of fact, I went through a training in the last year about change. Uh, it's level one or level two every time. So some people will jump at a change. Their life is about always reaching for the change. Other people, the change means that what does it mean to me? What am I going to have to do differently now? And it becomes a fearful place. So you have X amount of people that, that change is a positive. You have X amount of people that change is a negative. The, the deal with change is you've got to be open and honest about why you're changing. You know, when we brought in STEM into our school, when I, when I brought that in, I had to educate myself first. What, what is STEM? You know, what, what's the, what's the point? What's the purpose? Why am I going to do this? And why would I ask somebody else to do it? And then, once I did that, I went through training with my teachers and I stepped them through the same exact process that I went through. And I taught them what it is. And then we rolled it right into our students. And then we are, we are currently rolling it into our community tonight. We're having a STEM night. And part of that is to educate our community what that STEM is. So change is not something that you can do overnight and you can't do it without the why. People have to know why are you needing to do that? That would be wrong of me to jump into a system and make a bunch of changes without knowing what's going on start. So it's not that I'm, uh, not wanting to answer your question, but I can only tell you who I am and what I've done in my, my own life and kind of how I feel about it. Uh, I do think lots of times though, if teachers are feeling valued and that they have a voice, I have found this at my school, if they feel valued and they have a voice, then change or whatever you're dealing with is more manageable. And so that's, uh, that is something that I would want to bring to the table. One of the ways I would do that is I'd make sure people did have a voice. And I've worked through my principals and assistant principals to make sure that occur, that occasion, that happened. So let me just launch into something. One of the things that we're doing at our school, and I love it, we have a, a weekly, um, action team meeting. It takes place on Wednesdays at 11 o'clock. We have an agenda. Every person on the, on the team has a name on the agenda. It's a shared Google Doc. Anything they want to bring onto the table is put on that agenda. Anything that we speak about in that meeting is open to discussion and it is sent back out into the teachers. But we chose the action team members by putting someone from every hallway in every building on that team. And so now, when they bring that into that meeting, we make those decisions, they understand the why and they understand that they're supposed to talk about it. And they take it back into the hallways and they're able to discuss what's going on, why we're doing it, what it's going to look like, or what's coming up and what's their opinion. And so you're just, you're deliberate in making sure people's got a voice. And now our jobs are stressful. Uh, teaching is stressful. Uh, some days more stressful than the others. But, um, if you're stressed out and you feel like no one's caring and no one's valuing all the work that you're doing and nobody's listening to anything you've got to say about it, then it, that gets kind of in a fearful, maybe a fearful place, but that's not the environment that I would want to create. Maybe somebody back there, Gary?
Yes, anybody in the audience wants to ask a question? I said that before the start of this session. Anybody, any of the teachers in the audience, any sports staff, anybody want? If not, I guess that concludes, uh, this session. Uh, we appreciate you all for coming out very much this afternoon. And at 4:30, we'll have dinner in the small conference room across the hall. We invite everybody to stay if you can and meet leader, uh, candidate today. And with that, uh, thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you all for asking questions. I appreciated that greatly. You know, keeps me on my toes. If I can't articulate what I feel and what I think, you know, that's important. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Fentress County School Board Meeting tonight. Uh, first of all, we'll take a roll call for a vote, I mean for our president.
Eddie Cook.
Here.
Nikki Voels.
Here.
Darlene Brannan.
Present.
Kathy Williams.
Here.
Gary Peters.
Here.
Sierra Coger.
Here.
Melissa Branstadter.
Present.
Karen Cooper.
Here.
Alicia Garrett.
Here.
William Cody.
Here.
Alrighty, uh, tonight we're here to interview our third candidate for director of schools, uh, Mr. Jason Tompkins. We'll give him about 10 minutes for an opening statement and then we'll have some questions for you.
All right. So here goes. I've done this a couple of times today and this is my best part, I think. I get to kind of just talk about me. Not that I'm usually talking about me, but at least I'm pretty good at this part. So my name is Jason Tompkins. I'm the current principal at Alvin-Ciork Institute. Uh, I'm the, the widower of Brandy Tompkins, who is a Fentress County school teacher and Faith Christian Academy school teacher. I'm the proud daddy of Ashlyn and Seth Tompkins, who go to York Institute. I'm the son of Larry and Wanda Tompkins and I'm the brother Tracy Tompkins. Um, I started my, my beginning in Armuthwaite, Tennessee, went to Armuthwaite Elementary, went to Allard Elementary, graduated York Institute in 94, went to Rome State, worked a full-time job, attended school two days a week. Uh, went there for two years, went to Tennessee Tech, graduated in the fall of, or December of 1998, uh, with a bachelor's degree in secondary education English. I went to work immediately for the Fentress County School System as a substitute, certified sub. Pretty much worked every day for the spring semester of 99. And in the summer of 99, I taught summer school for Fentress County School. And then in the fall, I was hired at York Institute to be a, a English teacher. And I taught English nine and 10 and world geography a couple of times in reading class. Uh, was pep club coach, got my school bus license and I drove for track, softball, baseball, football, basketball, bowling. Well, everybody needed one plus. I subbed for the county and I worked for, at that time, Dr. Young. And I taught for eight years. And, uh, during that time, I went ahead and got my masters and then my EDS and instruction, uh, instructional leadership. Uh, got my, uh, professional administrators license, my beginning, and then I went into my professional. Uh, Mr. Brannan at that point becomes superintendent and I became dean of students, uh, which is basically assistant principal with a few extra duties. And, uh, I lived in that world for eight years. And when I say lived, I lived. I mean, that was my, my life and my career. Uh, Brandy and the kids had to go through it with me. Uh, we attended every basketball game. We, I was still driving for the county as a substitute. I was still, um, I, I wasn't pep club at that time, but I was attending all the ball games. But I missed Brandon. And, uh, I provided safety, of course, to the games. I was over student, a lot of student scheduling at that time. I, but during my dean of students years, that's when I grew. Uh, I've, I've given this example a couple of times. You know, when I went in as dean of students, smartphones came out. We had cell phones, but not smartphones. And all the issues that came with the smartphones, you know, we had four or 500 students with a smartphone in their pocket and our rule was you can't use them. So just think about that a minute. Teenagers, smartphones in their pockets and our, our job was to say you can't have them or can't use them. They couldn't be seen. They couldn't be heard. And so, uh, man, I, the conflict that arose out of that was phenomenal. And then all of the issues that came from that was phenomenal. You know, we were learning how to deal with, uh, text messaging, cheating in the classroom, passing pictures. We learned all kinds of things. And of course, at the first, when I took it, you know, I was just, um, trying to do what was right, trying to do, hold the line, hold the rule, do the things that you're supposed to do. And as we grew and as we got smarter and as we learned how to deal with technology in the classroom and students with technology and teachers with technology, uh, I learned the value of, uh, policy, procedure, holding to what you're supposed to hold to, dealing with conflict, dealing with parents, dealing with students, dealing with community. And, um, you know, the growth that I felt there created me into what I was able to become, which is now the principal. So about six and a half years ago, um, I became principal of York Institute and federal programs director. And, um, so that gave me principal job, federal programs job, uh, instructional leader with federal programs came ESL. I'm also an ESL teacher. And at one time I had an ESL student. I was federal programs, head over the subs. Uh, I was doing fifth block disciplinarian and, um, I don't know, I don't know what all I was doing at sometimes, but we were getting it done. And, uh, so I've done that for the last six and a half years. Recently, this semester, I was able to hand, uh, my federal programs over to Julie Sales at my school. Uh, I was able to, I did the S R one and S R two and the planning for S R three. And of course, being trained with some state consultants, my new boss, uh, Mr. Bush and, uh, Dr. Mason at the Department of Education. Uh, I've worked a lot on strategic planning and implementing a culture of, uh, teacher, uh, learning or teacher, a culture of teacher, uh, excellence and student learning. And, uh, I think I'm ready. Who's first?
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. I get to lead the parade here. What will you do to create an atmosphere in the schools that will lead to educational excellence for all students?
Uh, right back to what I just said. You have to create a culture of teacher and learning. You ha, you have to support your teachers and you have to understand what quality learning is. And then you've got to get that implemented into your classroom. Uh, that's the basic purpose of a school is to teach students so that they can grow and learn and become successful as adults. So, um, you have to, you have to start though with supporting your teachers. And then you have to also figure out what is quality learning. Now, for the last two years, we've worked, I hate to say desperately because it's not been desperately, I don't want to use the right words. We've worked extremely intentionally to identify what is quality learning. And quality learning is this. It's taking standards, which is the reason that you're teaching, and you break that into targets for your students. And then you create quality strategies to get that learning across. And then you assess it to figure out if they're learning it. And if they're not learning it, you've got to figure out how you're going to remediate it. And if they are learning it, you've got to figure out how to enrich it. And that's what quality learning is. It's proven, I didn't come up with that. I was trained in it.
Sit an instance in your current position that demonstrates your ability to build confidence in the schools.
Well, success breeds success and positivity breeds positivity. Sit where I have built success. Okay, let's go to STEM. Um, last year, uh, we had a state, a, a state cognitive representative that came into our school, Dr. Worthington. And he began to work with us on what STEM education is. And to be honest, I wasn't really for sure. I knew that STEM stood for science, technology, engineering and math, but I doesn't, you know, I, in my mind, maybe it was a person, maybe it was a program, maybe it's a class, but it's not. It's, it's, it's much greater than that. It's the intensive and in, and intentional collaboration of your science, technology, engineering and math standards. And you collaborate it and you make students, uh, learn how to think and to problem solve. And so you go through the steps. You have to, uh, you have to intentionally find your areas that you can connect in those classrooms. And then you bring collaboration through modeling it first through your teachers, then down into your students. And you, you set a plan in order to, uh, roll that out. Like at York, we're starting with the ninth grade. We're currently having our STEM night tonight and I hope they're doing a good job. Uh, but you roll it out and then you, you implement through professional development and then you provide the supports needed. And then you look with fidelity to see where do you, where you're struggling. And you keep digging in and you find where, uh, whatever helps you need to make sure and you, and you increase it. And you keep digging in and you find where, uh, whatever helps you need to make sure and you, and you increase it as you go. So this year, we're doing ninth grade, next year we'll be doing tenth grade. And then the third year we'll be doing eleventh grade and of course, fourth year we'll be doing seniors. And we will use the freshman class to be our, our, uh, uh, I won't say, use the right words again. They will be our initial group. They'll also be the sophomore groups and then they will teach our freshman groups. And then they'll be the tenth, the eleventh grade groups, who will be working with our tenth grade groups and our tenth grade groups will be working with our freshman groups. But that only takes care of the freshman class. So we also implemented the engineering design process in the tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade this year. And that's just intentionally thinking and modeling. And if you're in the team evaluation, thinking and problem solving is part of the things that you struggle the most to get. And students have to learn how to think. Uh, a lot of us was sort of taught that way to go through a process when we were growing up. You know, even the cartoons we watched, we watched, um, Road Runner and, and Wile E. Coyote. And so, uh, just for a moment, I'll kind of run you through the system. You know, Wile E. Coyote, when he, uh, when he was wanting to, to catch the Road Runner to eat, you know, he'd come up with a plan. You know, a little pop-up come up. And so, you know, that was his thinking process. That's the question, how do I catch the Road Runner? Then he would devise a plan, most time it came through Acme, you know, and he'd order a part. And then he would, he would put it all together. So that's the creation. So we were taught these steps. And then of course, the last step of the engineering design process is the revision stage. And that's where growth comes. You know, once you do something, how does it, how do you evaluate that to see if it's successful and what else can you do to make it better? And where do you learn from it? So, uh, we put that in the tenth, eleventh and twelfth grades this year. So the freshmen's doing our STEM initiative. Our sophomores, juniors and seniors are doing the, uh, the EDP. At the end of this school year, and we're well on track to getting this done, we will be the nineteenth school in the state of Tennessee to be cognis STEM accredited. Thank you. Well.
Jason, tell us about the most important decision that you've made in your last or current position. How did you involve the people who would be affected by that decision?
Uh, targeted learning, taking standards, making them, uh, student-friendly targets for every single day. So when a kid walks in the classroom or a student walks in the classroom, they should be able to see what's expected of them. And what's expected of them should be based with fidelity and with those standards that we're being paid to teach them. And then by the end of that class, that teacher should know how well that student has mastered that or if they've mastered it. And if they've not mastered it, what they ought to, or they need to help that student achieve. So how did I implement it? Planning. I was, I went through professional development. Uh, we used a lot of planning periods last semester of working on building, uh, quality targets from our standards. And, um, so like, I'm, that's a train and trainer model, the way that we used. And our kid, our teachers worked best under that. I think Fenchers County teachers would too. So you take something, uh, you target it, uh, like for me, it was building strong targets out of standards. And I learned how to do that. And then we brought in, uh, X amount of teachers. We taught them how to do that. Then we use those teachers to teach our other teachers how to do that. The kick on it though is you can't just expect it, you've got to inspect it. You've got to trust, but then you got to verify. So this semester, every Sunday afternoon or Monday morning, I go through, I have forty-two teachers with their lesson plans for the week. Their lesson plans will have a standard, it'll have a target, it'll have an assessment and it'll have their strategies to get that across. And I will provide feedback to make sure they're getting it done and supporting them where they're struggling. And so that's how you keep something, that's how you implement. You've got to trust and verify, but you've got to stay with it. And the key is you got to support.
In your administration, what avenues are open for you to listen to the concerns of employees, students, parents and the community? And how would you plan to make time available for all of those to be involved?
Uh, let's see. First of all, you have to be intentional to listen. A, a lot of people can talk to you, but if you're not listening, and sometimes that's not automatic. You have to, uh, you have to make your mind up, what that person's got to say is important, uh, whoever it is. And so be, you'd have to listen intentionally and you've got to be available to listen. You know, I, like at our school, we're at every ballgame, we're at, uh, functions. I would be at the STEM tonight if I was not here. Uh, so intentionally listening, of course, is one thing. And then there's textbook answers. You know, if you look at the team administrator evaluation rubric, it's going to say that you're bringing in stakeholders through surveys, that you're doing it through, uh, community representatives, you're doing it through advisory councils, you're doing it through, uh, you know, being open house or having open house or title one meetings, uh, parent teacher conferences, uh, and all those things you do. But the key is you got to be open to listening. And so, um, I think I'm pretty good with that. That's one of my strengths, I believe, is building and maintaining relationships. And it's not something that I was just born that way, it's something that I've evolved into. So that would be my, my, my first grunt answer on that.
Mr. Tompkins, how do you keep up with research and initiatives that may drive change?
Well, of course, at all administration gets the commissioners update, you know, weekly update, that's one thing. And then of course, with me, we've had a lot of access to the Department of Education and through some really solid professional development. Then you attend, uh, principals study councils, there's one at, uh, that's out of the Upper Cumberland Study Council. Uh, I've also been part of the, uh, federal programs study council, uh, supervisor study council. But, um, the key, I mean, you can find professional development and you can find initiatives constantly. You can Google that. But what you got to do is identify what you need and then intentionally look for that. There's someone that's doing it well. Uh, earlier in my career, I felt like I had to, I had to figure it out. And that was silly. So, uh, someone is doing what you need well. And you just need to go get it and figure it out. You know, that's like the Dragon's Renaissance, Mr. Brannan was the superintendent during that time. Uh, I was, I didn't know that, I didn't dream that up. But we went to a school down in Manchester, I think. Actually, it was Mr. Bush's school, that's now the director at our high school. And he was implementing Renaissance. And so I'd heard about it, I heard about this reward system, I heard about, you know, all the things that was coming on it. And Bruce Wyam went with me, uh, and a couple of other teachers. And we went down and saw Mr. Bush's school. And we saw how they were implementing this culture of rewarding good and positive behavior. And of course, when I was the dean of students, I was dealing with discipline all the time. So I was trying to find, I needed something to offset the negative. You know, what, what are we doing to, to reward the positive? And so we went down, we looked at it. Uh, and it was a, uh, this concept at that time was just almost unheard of. We said, you know, we used to give trophies for good behavior. Well, kids don't respond too well at that time to trophies, they like money. And so we found a way. We came back and we started digging in on how we could make this happen. I found some outstanding sponsors in our, in our community. And I said, what I want to do is give money away. And I want to give it in your name. You give us the money, we'll take care of making sure that you're getting the credit, but the students are going to win from it. And it has absolutely changed our culture. You couldn't run Dragon's Renaissance out of our school. But it's finding what somebody else is doing well or finding what you need and then going out there and finding out what needs to be done well. They'll show you, take you back and make it your own. Thank you.
Mr. Tompkins, describe how you've led a school or system in creating a vision and building support to accomplish that vision.
Uh, I think I'll go back to STEM or I could go to, um, uh, targets and learning. Let's go back to targets and learning. That's a, the key to education is having quality education in the classroom and what does that look like? Well, it, it is what it is. It's standard-based learning, it's target, it's student-friendly targets. It's knowing what the student, it's knowing what the student's able to do at the end of a class. It's staying with it every single day. When a kid walks in, they should know what is expected of them. And then they should know if they've been able to achieve it. And so it's just being intentional and determining that. Uh, and then providing the support. Again, you can't get away from surpi- you know, providing support. I had a, a preacher said one to us a long time ago. He said, if you, uh, to, with sheep, he said, you got to feed sheep every day. If you shear them every day, you just shear them once a year. If you shear them every day, you know, you're going to have some more outsheep quick. And that's the same way with teachers and with students. You've got to encourage and set before them and support them. You know, you're going to have some knuckleheads every once in a while, but you got to love them too. So, you know, it's, it's being intentional and knowing what your purpose is. And the purpose is for us to educate our students. That's, that's what everything drives to. You know, and really, if you're, if you're dealing with a lot of stuff that's not talking about the, the education of the students, maybe you need to rethink what it is that you're working with. Uh, our parents, and you know this, you're a mama. Our parents give our, give us their, their children seven hours a day. And they have an expectation for us to do what we're supposed to do for those kids. And that's to teach them the standards the state of Tennessee is putting out for us. So it's not about feelings, it's about intentionally doing what we're supposed to do and having the means to get that across.
Mr. Tompkins, our board is dependent upon the county commission to fund the budget. How would you propose to gain their support of the budget and how would you involve them in the budget development?
Okay, the budget's going to be a growth part for me. Um, I have worked with the federal programs budget at York for the last six years, last six and a half years. And I have been part of the overall school budget for, for longer than that. For me, best to work with a budget is through line items. And you know, we know what we're spending, we know what we spent last year. It, and, and let me be very frank about this. Learning the budget's going to be just like a, a new class for me. That's got, I have to be very intentional in learning the ins and outs of the budgets that we got. And I've got, if I get this job, I think I'll go in on July one, the budget will be set for the upcoming school year. But I can use the budget we've got right now and I can determine what our major expenditures are. I think salaries are like twelve and a half million. Uh, all the services that we provide, I think it's like another six million. But inside of that, there's a lot of line items. And you have to be able to break things down and figure out where you're spending your money. And then, once you figure that out, you can be open and transparent about it. It's taxpayer dollars. Anything we spend ought to be able to be stood right here in front of everyone here and they ought to be able to know where we spend our money. And we shouldn't be apologetic about spending our money. It needs to be intentional and there needs to be an understanding of the why. Now, I also realize that learn, working with the board is going to be a new experience for me. I've worked with the Department of Education a lot, but not with the Board of Ed in Fenchers County. So I'm going to be learning that as well. But when we're open and we're transparent and we know where our money is and what we're doing with it, what we need to do with it, and that's through the planning and strategic, uh, that, that's through your strategic needs and planning that goes with it. Then you can go before your commission and say, here's what we're doing, here's what we've been doing, here's what we're wanting to do. And here's where we need some help. And if you're not good stewards with it, then I wouldn't think they'd want to help us. But if we can prove that we're being good stewards with our money and there, there's a need, and I, and I'll just throw one out there, and I'm not suggesting we need one, but I'm saying if there was a need, save for a new elementary school. You know, and, and it's not in the budget. There's, that's a, that's a large expenditure and that would have to take, I would think, and this is another look, growing experience for me too, but there'd have to be some consideration from a county commission to say, you know, that's something we want to support. And so you have to be able to show them, what have we been doing with our money? Uh, it's, it's basically just being good stewards and have an understanding of where the money's going.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tompkins, can you explain what you have done to build and maintain a good relationship with your board?
See, that's one of those questions that makes it a little more difficult for me. I don't have a board. I work, um, I work with the Department of Education. Uh, my immediate supervisor, of course, is my director, Mr. Bush. Before him was, uh, Dr. Miller, before him was Mr. Brannan and before him was Dr. Young. Um, we've had several different people in the next step above that, which would be the, uh, uh, Assistant Commissioner of Education or a Deputy Commissioner of Education. Um, but through all of those times and all those different people, I've always been able to just be open and honest. Uh, try to be transparent, when I ask a question, give them the truth. Uh, if I'm lacking, acknowledge it. You know, that's, uh, i- if you try to hide something, you know, I, that's not being a quality employee and it's not modeling what you expect others to do. So I guess just being transparent with the board is my, my number one answer there. If I know it, you should know it. And if you know it, I'd like to know it.
Thank you.
Tell us of three curricular or instructional improvements that occurred as a result of your leadership. What evidence do you have that they were improvements?
Uh, well, some of this is redundant, but I'm going to, I'm going to just turn loose on them. Uh, strategic planning, uh, for overall culture of teaching and learning, so that doesn't happen overnight. That takes in to account the things that you're doing and the things that you're wanting to do. Um, take for instance, the STEM implementation. That took six months of planning just to roll out for the first day. Uh, and what you have to do is you have to build that. You have to decide, how am I going to, how am I going to learn it myself? How am I going to teach others to be able to do it? How are we going to implement it? How are we going to support it? And then how are we going to monitor it with fidelity? And then finally, what does success look like? If you don't have an idea of what success looks like, how do you know that you got there? It's kind of like targeted learning. Uh, a student should know what they're expected to learn and then that way they know if they've done it or not and you know if they've done it or not. So one of them would be, uh, just strategic planning in itself. That was new for me, that was a whole new process. So, uh, I had to do a lot of growing there. Another one obviously would have been, uh, the STEM process in the school. That's a, I, I can't prove to you that it's totally successful yet. I can show you how it's being successful. I could give you, uh, uh, quality data to show that, uh, that targets are being made. Or I'm sorry, not targets, but that collaborations are being made. We had our first STEM challenge about a month ago. My son was one of them. Uh, our students took, um, it was a school-wide or a ninth grade, uh, wide challenge where students chose the best hydration. And they used, uh, Gatorade, Pedialyte, Mountain Dew, milk, water, and they soaked eggs. And then they weighed those eggs. And so the science classes dealt with the lab experience. And then the math classes went with the, uh, with the, uh, charting and graphing, using their standards and how they would create that. And then my ELA teachers wrote an argumentative essay on the results. And they targeted that to a coach to say, here's the best thing that you could use for your, uh, your class, your, your sport, for them to hydrate prior to a game. And then our computer apps class took that data and rolled it together and made slideshows for each student, or the students did it. So how do you prove that outside of the challenge? I think we will prove at the end of this school year when we're that nineteenth, uh, school in the state of Tennessee that's cognis STEM accredited. And that is a big deal. So another one would be the, the targeted learning. I can't get away from that. When I, when that was brought to my attention and I was trained on that, it transformed me. Um, I taught for eight years. I tried to teach the standards for eight years. I, I worked hard for eight years teaching in the classroom. But when I was taught what a quality classroom looks like and then I could see the results of it, it made sense. But it doesn't happen overnight. Again, you have to plan, you have to train, you have to support, you've got to encourage. And then you've got to give that, uh, that success story at the end, you know, I, like, for instance, last week, I, I was talking to my teachers during faculty meeting and I said, all of this work that you're doing, uh, you know, I can't say thank you enough, but look at what your students are doing under it. That's thanks, that's, that's where the thanks comes in. And our teachers agree. You know, it's making a difference in the lives of our students. And the student leaves the classroom feeling like they're successful and the teacher leaves the classroom at the end of the day feeling like they're successful. And it's not just feelings, they know it, they can prove it. So, how's that?
Mr. Tompkins, how can you bring together a diverse, talented group of individuals to form an effective team?
Well, first thing you have to do is treat people the way you want to be treated. I mean, that's just the golden rule, but it's absolutely, it's truth. Uh, if you value- If you value people, you'll listen to them, you'll give them a voice. And you know, you'll, you'll try to lead by example. Like, like you're asking, how would I lead people into that? So I would model the behavior I wanted them to do. I would keep myself, I would expect myself to be an exemplar of what I was expecting them to do. And I have found, and I wasn't always like this, solution-driven, student-centered. You know, you can get all kinds of different issues and problems comes up. But when you focus it back to what is best for that student or what is best for those students, and then you start looking at the solution instead of what the problem has been or who the problem might have been and casting blame. You're looking backwards. When you start looking forwards and you start driving towards solutions and you let people have the ability to voice and feel valued. And you know, none of us are perfect. So if they make mistakes, you don't, you don't, you know, take a pound of flesh out of them. You just start building that whole scenario and you keep doing it. You do it over and then you do it over and you do it over. And so people begin to trust. It's just like building a team. I didn't play basketball, but I've watched a lot of basketball. If you have five basketball players out there on the floor and all of them are trying to be the star, you don't have the successful team. But when you put five basketball players on the, on the floor and they have worked together and they've talked together and they communicate together and they practice together and they play together, they start trusting each other. And, and that's the same way in any, any team that you have. Once you start building trust with each other and that you can push back on one another, because iron sharpens iron, it always has. Then you start finding success. And then you start believing in each other and you see what you can accomplish. And I can assure you that I don't have all the answers. I have learned intensively that a collaborative answer works better than an individual if you can get to a collaborative situation. Five heads thinks better than one head. And you know, like with our county systems, we've got some excellent principals. And I would have to rely on them heavily to, to help me see what I need to see. And for me to help them maybe become a little more solution-driven if they've not been. They may be great, may be just a cakewalk in there. But at the same time, I feel like if we can build some trust and put our, put our thoughts together being solution-driven, that we can build a team.
Mr. Tompkins, give some specific examples of things you have done as administrator that you think significantly contributed to making your facility or staff a team.
Okay, so let me just give an example. I've kind of answered some of that two or three times. I don't want to be so just, just totally redundant. So one of the things we've done this semester, and I didn't create this, I didn't come up with this. We, we created an action team. And so we pulled somebody out of every building or every hallway and put them on our action team. I've got fourteen members. It meets every Wednesday at eleven o'clock. We went through, built, took, we made sure they all had the same planning period. And that way we have someone in every hallway that is in the middle of decision-making. And so when you're making a decision, we try to put things forward so that they know what's coming up. And in every hallway, they've got, so everybody's got a voice. They've got somebody that they can talk to that knows they're going to be in that action team meeting, that knows what's going to be going on. And then they're able to give them information or give them concerns. They put it on the agenda. Everything that we discuss is open. We take notes on it and we publish it right back into the teachers and staff. And then you're able to create that concept of what I'm doing is valuable. What I'm saying is being heard. What we are doing is making a difference. And then it comes back to me. And so that, that concept to me is, it's, it's really beautiful. I wished I would have come up with it, but what I'm doing is implementing it and it's working. So that's a, that's an example of how I'm doing that.
We expect our Director of Schools to be active and involved with York Institute and local private schools. How would you go about accomplishing this?
Well, I say well a lot, don't I? I think I've got a, a leg up on, on the York Institute one. I've, I've got a pretty good relationship with the people up there. And I would be, I want to make sure I give credit where credit's due. It's amazing how much Mr. Bush, Assistant Commissioner, Dr. Mason has poured into me and taught me in just the last six months. And now this is my opinion, and I think it's the same. I think I can speak okay with him. York Institute is full of Fentress County students. And Fentress County is full of Fentress County students. And so there shouldn't be a competition between York Institute and the Fentress County School System. We should be teaching Fentress County students and working together to do that. Three-fourths of York Elementary, I mean, three-fourths of York Institute, I'm still not getting that right. Three-fourths of the county's elementary schools, students are feeding straight into York Institute. So I think collaboration between the two is not just wanted. I think it's necessary. Now, I also think that, you know, you might say healthy competition in a way is good. And I, I want to see the schools in Fentress County doing as well as, as York Institute, because it's all Fentress County students. And so I, when I say competition, I don't even like, I wish I hadn't even said that out loud. That's not what I'm wanting. What I want to see is students doing as well in one school at York Elementary, at Allard Elementary, South Fentress Elementary, and Pine Haven Elementary, and then doing just as well at Clark Range High School as they are at York Institute. I, I want to see Fentress County students succeeding, not, not one system or another system. I don't know if I answered that very well or not.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Is that it?
That concludes our questioning. We'll, we'll give you a, we'll give you a few minutes to ask us any questions or closing comments.
That went pretty fast. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you that came out tonight. My family, I've got friends, I've got church. Oh, I know what I didn't do. I didn't answer about Faith Christian Academy. So my wife taught there. I go to, that's where I go to church. I put in my notes that I smile in the choir. But I'm a big proponent of parents having choice. I think they ought to have choice. But I want to make Fentress County schools the same as I've wanted to make York Institute. I want, I want our schools to be viable, excellent choices for our parents to think, think, well, I, I don't think I want to go with a Christian school. I want to go into the public school. And I want our public schools to be a, a good, safe, healthy, excelling environment. But at the same time, I don't want to take away from the fact that I want parents to have that choice. Again, my children attended Faith Christian Academy for their younger years. My wife taught there. She also taught in Fentress County School System, York Elementary. I go to church with Faith Christian. And so I'm, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of them. But at the same time, Fentress County schools would be my, that would be the place that I would want to make viable for our parents to say, that's a, that's a good place for them to go. I'm finished now.
Alrighty, good job. As a board, I'd like to thank all three of the candidates for coming and putting up with these questions for the last three weeks. Also like to thank our central office help for making sure we all had plenty to eat and food on all these occasions. And also thank the board from my standpoint. I had to take a little COVID break there for a couple of the first two. Other than that, that concludes our meeting. Denial, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have closing remarks?
Yes, sir. Oh, I thought that was, no. Hold on. That wasn't his closing remarks. We're going to give him a little more time. I thought that was his closing remarks. Go ahead, Mr. Tompkins. I'll have to do my speech over.
I, actually, I answered all of your questions because I've been watching just like everyone else and I scripted my answers. And I've done my best not to read a single one of them. I'm going to give you a copy of my answers. They're more in-depth and detailed than what I've actually said, but I hope I don't say anything, that I haven't said anything tonight that I've not included in my notes. So I'll give these to you at the end of this. I did script my last closing. And so I'm going to actually, I'm going to read that. Everything else I've done pretty well off the cuff. So in closing, I've done my best to represent who I am and what I've done. I've done it during the principals today. I did it with the educators today. I did it with the community today and tonight's the board. And obviously you'd be my boss if I get this job. If I'm blessed enough to be offered this position, I'll work just as hard for Fentress County as I have York Institute. That's, that's a promise. They say never to make promises, but that's a promise. I would, I'd give it my best. All of our students, both York and Fentress County, are Fentress County students. I am a product of the Fentress County Educational System and York Institute. Our community and our parents' desire for us, and I think I've even said this, for us to put the best education before their children as we can possibly do. And they depend on us to create a safe and healthy and model environment of what we expect them to become as adults. And they pay us with their tax dollars. And so you can't ever, you can't ever remove that concept. We have to do things for what's best for our students and our community. At that, I'll do my very best. I can't, I can't, I don't know what all that absolutely looks like, but I know that that's what I'll do. I'll give my best. My desire, I think I've already said this as well, be for me to know what you know and for you to know what I know. As the board, that's the only way this would work. It would have to be open and transparent. And so I don't want to get myself in a, in a finagle where I tell Nikki something, but I don't tell Darlene. Or if I tell Ms. Kathy something that I don't tell Sierra. If I know it, I want to share it with all of you. And if you know it, I'd like for all of you to share it with me. Each week, this is one of those promises. I will send out an email or a group text. And I'll tell you everything that I feel like is majorly important that's taking place and anything that I know that's coming up. I feel like that would be a great way for us to start being open and transparent. And so that's my, I guess that's my promises. Everything else is just hard work, dedication. Model the best that I can, hold myself accountable, and always know that I'm answering to a higher power. Right up there. I'm always answering to a higher power. I guess that's it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to interview. Hey, it's been a big honor just to be in the top three. That's a, that's been an accomplishment for me that I have not taken lightly. So thank you. And thank you again for all y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. And I apologize for getting ahead of the card there. I thought you answered her and I thought that was it. Now I guess we'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Meeting adjourned.